And that's life and that's so we wanted to make sure that we were intentionally putting a lot of group work, a lot of discussion, a lot of learning from each other, a lot of modeling, all of those things. So that is the last component of our goal. That being said, we also want them to be able to complete work alone. So it's only a portion of the goal. But our school, I have, they told me I have high expectations. I did make them revisit some of the, some of their goals. And so I feel like we've made really robust goals that are going to continue to progress forward.
Do you want any new questions along the way for each one?
Like, can we do questions at the end of each?
Sure.
Principle. So I'm just super curious to know what the interventions were for reducing absenteeism by that much.
Well, it was mostly a lot of voice to voice. So basically, I sent, we asked teachers to call when the children were absent, just to say, we miss having you at school, so that somebody noticed. And then when the absences ticked up, I set an appointment with the parents and we would have a phone call. And I just wanted to know what barriers were that were kind of getting in the way. And then we changed our, this one's kind of silly, but we changed our late pass instead of saying, please return us to the office. It said, we're really glad you're here. And so that when kids came in, they knew that there was a value and a connection. And we were just really cognizant of it. So, but it was a lot of communication, really. And I find that communication, voice to voice, is often more impactful.
That's great.
I'm also curious about, like, you're mentioning about incorporating more practices for students to, like, learn the why behind their learning. More specifically, what did that look like in class?
So a lot of times in elementary school, you may hear a teacher say, you need to know this because you're gonna need to know it. Like, a second grade teacher may say, you're gonna need to know it for third grade. Well, that doesn't really feel like the why of learning. What we want more is, what are you gonna use in the greater world? How is this gonna serve you as a sort of a lifelong human, as opposed to this siloed experience in school? And, I mean, there are a couple of things we learned that are really school-specific that you're, that we're gonna hear of, maybe. But most of the things, there is a greater, a greater reason and an importance to learning them. And so we just want the teachers to be able to share that. And I've noticed with adults, too. If you tell adults the why, why you're doing something, they'll buy in way better. So why wouldn't students do the same thing?
Yeah, no, I definitely appreciate that part of the goal. Because like, I think that's, even in the high school level, like, we see that a lot, like, needing to know why we're learning certain things.
All right, I'd like to go next here. The twins of the north, you're gonna hear, like, the same sort of story, actually. I guess I'll start with some celebrations before we go into our school improvement plan for this year. First, I just want to shout out, if there's any Wes Mercer Wolfpack people out there, I have been pushing, are you? I was talking to the owl a little bit, too, but Ava, I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're a former wolf.
I was, too.
Yes! All right, you wanna go back here while we're on it?
Oh!
We're surrounded. Okay, so we have some in the room. We might have some online, too. I just want to shout out Wolfpack, because this was a collaborative effort of our students, staff, families that contributed their input from our pack. Christina was on our pack, too. She's, I guess, online. So just as a success, sort of celebrations from last year, we are in our second year of the Wolfpack block, which is similar to what Northwood's doing with the success blocks, the intervention extension block. It's been just instrumental in resourcing our staff to target small group instruction across the school day and highlight, really, that every student gets what they need, and that we are using that full capacity. Our teachers are super jazzed in the ways that they're using data and informing that instruction. And I do want to just highlight that real quick with the, with the short video before we do our, our thing. So this is a video that was created by our first grade team with our coach. It was not with the intention of sharing it beyond our staff, but I had shared it to Fred and Nova and said, hey, look at this cool stuff. And Fred said, why don't we share this here? So this is a shout out Kelly Flaherty, Sarah Lynn, and Kaylee Gazimbi, and Coach Abby Espigard. Let's hear what you got. It's only about three minutes, so.
Not a full length movie today.
Throughout the month of October, I had the opportunity to partner with the first grade team to consider how we might use fall diagnostic results in math to inform intervention, reinforcement, and extension groups for Wolfpack block. Kaylee, Kelly, and Sarah are here to share what that process looked like and some positive implications for student achievement.
Our first step involved looking at the instructional groupings report. Abby was able to run a grade level report that grouped all first grade students by instructional needs. We used this information to make sizable groups for each Wolfpack lead. Some important considerations included pairing our most emerging mathematicians with certified staff and our most advanced mathematicians with classified staff. Additionally, we were thoughtful about keeping the size of our para-led groups small enough to manage in the flex learning spaces in our pods.
Next, we use the prerequisite report for Unit 1 to inform what essential skills we needed to prioritize during Wolfpack. In this case, we would focus on the prerequisite skills of composing and decomposing ten, understanding addition and subtraction within ten, and relating addition and subtraction to code problems. Then we each located and prepared the accompanying resources from iReady that were aligned with our student groupings, including likely acquired, monitor and support, and in-depth review.
Finally, each of us used the 10-day planner to schedule our groups across the week and considered when students might engage in teacher-led and student-led activities, as well as independent practice.
Based on the suggested resources in the prerequisite report for our students needing in-depth review, I plan to rotate students between teacher-led and student-led activities. This would ensure that our most emerging mathematicians had some level of teacher or student scaffolding on a daily basis.
Again, based on the suggested resources in the prerequisite report for our students needing monitoring and support, Sarah and I plan to rotate students between teacher-led and student-led activities and independent practice. This would ensure that students were working within their zone of proximal development as we gradually released responsibility from heavy teacher scaffolding to peer support, and finally, independent application.
Based on the prerequisite report for our students who had likely acquired the essential skills needed for Unit 1, students would be provided enrichment and challenge opportunities while meeting daily with their para-Wolfpack lead.
Something we are continuing to think about on this team is how we might progress monitor students proficiency on the essential skills identified in the prerequisite report. Our current thinking is that if we target prerequisite skills needed to access Tier 1 content in curriculum, then we should see improved performance on students' lesson quizzes. If you and your team are interested in using this process to inform Wolfpack blocks for your next unit of iReady math instruction, I'd welcome the opportunity to partner with you in the work. Thanks to the first grade team for the collaboration and the opportunity to engage in student-centered coaching.
Okay, so that's just to kind of put life to all of data. These are all kids behind here. There's 431 kids at our school. And this is a celebration, just the structure that we put in place that we're continuing forward. This is one action item to support our academic goal. But I just wanted to highlight that work as we start out this year. For our school improvement plan this year, we do have a focus again academically on math. We, of course, still teach and focus on literacy instruction, but we're seeing our scores in math a slightly, little slightly lower, and that's why we're staying there. We are in a privileged place to have a lot of our students at and above grade level coming in. And so our goal is that every single student makes at least a year's growth. And for those who are not at or above grade level, it's more than a year's growth. I think the emphasis here is really on the students who are at and above. We have a considerable percentage. When you look at the iReady data and our school improvement plan, you can a little be, be a little bit deceptive, because that yellow at the start of the year is actually on grade level. It says one grade level below. The students are testing to the next grade level that they're entering. And so if they're a second grader going into second grade, they're being tested in that fall on second grade diagnostic content. So it makes sense that they're proficient in first grade, and now they're, they're showing as a yellow first grade level that they're going into that second grade content. So across the board, overall, you're seeing one grade level below, meaning kind of at where they need to be in, in terms of iReady's viewpoint from the fall. And then the early on and mid-above to be primarily what our student population is. Of course, we focus on students who are well below with a lot of interventions and supports from our LSP program to Wolfpack and so on. But this year, really, we're looking at how can we make sure that every single student, no matter where they start, is making a year's growth in a year's time as they should and deserve. And particularly because, like I said, we have so many who are coming in above, that those enrichment and extension opportunities are within their content blocks and within our Wolfpack block every day. And not just for students who are qualified as Code 32 and receiving high-cap services, but those who are ready for those challenges. So that's what we'll be doing in math, continuing Wolfpack, but also our academic pathways that we started last year, which is really making sure that we are tightly looking at students who are not yet at grade level or not making the year's growth, and then mapping out exactly what their plan is. This isn't a pathway that's dependent on an IEP or anything else. It's really just being tight and, and making sure that none, none of our students slip through the cracks and we're not getting to June without having really intensive supports for any student based on what they need. And then our SEL goals, we've nested them. Like, there's, there's one that stood out pretty strongly, and it was that our students responded favorably to the, to the statement that students respect one another in this community only to a percentage of 19. That, it, it was striking to all of us, to our families who looked at it, to our staff. And that's, that's something we really are digging into this year to find out more about what that means and how we can support our students to engage in just more community building around that. And we have some hypotheses right now, but really, it's building our school community through our class meetings and assemblies and ways that we're problem-solving, and knowing that if we have a conflict at recess, or we were friends in fourth grade, or back in second grade, we had an argument one time, and it's still in our head. Like, those challenges don't mean that we don't respect one another. So kind of normalize and building on problem-solving in that way. And then the other components you'll see in that SEL section were pulled from our EES as well, which it, it's a range of things that kind of all follow under the umbrella of empowerment. So you'll see goal setting and reflection, taking, having challenge and opportunities for challenge and productive struggle and risk-taking. We've kind of dove into the deep end around challenge and risk-taking already, and been doing a lot of work with our students and staff on productive struggle and making sure every student feels challenged, just particularly in math. So these are overlapping with our academic goal as well. And in this plan that you have on your computer, you'll see all of the actions that we're taking in both of those initiatives, the staffing that we're putting towards it, and then the timelines, both short, middle, and long term, in terms of how that rolls out over the year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that y'all have about Wes Mercer, and thank you for allowing us to be here tonight.
I think you answered the question that I had when I was going through all of these in terms of the iReady assessment tool. And I just want to make sure that I understand. So, so with the fall, I appreciate the yellow, and that's like the grade that they're just starting.
Yeah.
So we can expect
Yep.
the goal by spring is that that's all green
Yep.
with a little bit of baby yellow, because that's just the norm, right?
That's right.
Okay, so, okay. And then, that's great. That helps a lot. And I would, because I was wondering that.
Yeah, I mean,
Reviewing all of it.
I, I feel like when we first started with iReady assessments a couple of years back, that scale, red, yellow, green, in academics is very common, but the yellow is always, in, in other systems, used as approaching grade level. And so this was a shift for us, too, to understand that in this programming that we're using, that yellow is actually right on grade level, coming into that grade, so not fall diagnostic.
Okay. It's more concerning if it's spring.
Yes, correct.
All right.
Correct.
I just want to say, I really appreciated you breaking down, like, I'd seen it on the report, but like, like breaking down how you look at the kids and decide, you know, who's getting enrichment from whom, and like, what, like, how big the groups are. That was really helpful to just see it laid out and kind of like the, the sequence of it, right? Because it's like, you know, I'd heard about all this last year when I was on the pack, and, and it just like, it's very hard to visualize and kind of really like grasp it if you're not a part directly of the process. So thank you for that.
Yeah, that's all our, that's all our teachers and our coach, you know. They've really rallied together, and the collaboration that we see in our building and, and with our coaches to make this really successful has been phenomenal. So, and I'm just, I'm just a watcher with them. So that's why I shout out the first grade team, because they, they put that together. And I'll do another really quick plug. We're starting a podcast type of thing called Commuting with Coach Abby. So I'll put the link on our Instagram when it comes out, but she's doing little bite-sized learning pieces. So I'd love to share that with all of you, too. She's gonna be embarrassed that I shared that, but.
Um, I just, I really appreciate your, your SEL and the things that, that you guys both and all have, have pointed out. And it's really concerning that our little ones who should be going and enjoying life and not have worries, like, to me, this is screaming that our little ones and, you know, I think we're in for a lot more turmoil, just to guess, during this year, and, and just to really focus on ways that we can get those worries. I mean, these guys do not need to go into school with worries about their day, and, and they are. And it's, so thank you for looking at it and focusing on it, and I can't wait to see what you can do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, before I share about Island Park, I have to point out Lucy Dorr was in my kindergarten class so many years ago. I'm surprised to see you here as a school board member. It's impressive. I mean, Lucy is probably one of the most responsible, kind kids I can remember in all my history of 29 years of education. So it's a pleasure to see you here. It's very exciting. So I hope you're really proud. I brought I brought with me tonight Laurie Stulinski, a second grade teacher, and Paula Sanchez, who teaches our four-five split. And she also serves as our response to intervention team lead. And so they'll be able to help answer some of the questions. Perhaps I wanted you to have an opportunity to get real-life teacher perspective, should that come up. So I'll share with you a little bit first about our math academic goal. And it's that 100% of students will achieve grade level proficiency or beyond in the domain of numbers and operations. And we selected numbers and operations because that's really the foundation for mathematical success. And when we looked at the data of our fall diagnostic testing, you can see there on the very first page, the number of students who are already at or above grade level and those students who are at risk of not being there just yet. There's a nice combination, so it made sense that we would focus on that, so that we can provide an opportunity for all students to make at least a year's growth, if not more. And I want to talk to you a little bit about how we're gonna monitor that. Of course, through our diagnostics three times a year, teachers are gonna use unit tests. And our response intervention team has gone through every grade level and every unit test to determine which questions have fallen in under the umbrella of numbers and operations to identify that for teachers. Paula's team has created a central recording place so that all that data can be recorded, so we can actually use it in our PLC meetings and as a staff to determine how are we doing, cause our progress toward our goal, and what might we need to continue to do. That coupled with the information that we can glean from our MyPath individualized instruction, and that we know that the MyPath isn't a substitute for instruction, but it, it provides some additional support for areas where there are pockets of need, or areas where students are really accelerated and can provide additional enrichment for them there. So we've used that as our third point of data collection. So when we look at the data over time, one of the cool tools about iReady is that they have a diagnostic scores placement tables for every domain and for the score overall. And so we can look and see where a student falls, and we can, we can say within this range. And then we can say, in order for them to get at least a year's growth or more, you know, they have to be at this score. So that's one way that we can actually identify each student, so that we're looking at every child and make sure they actually make that year's growth or more. The components that we're putting into place to help us reach that goal are professional development, being led by our Learning Services Department, has five days that are all focused on learning how to use the data and the information and resources within the curriculum to provide small group skills instruction. And those professional development pieces have already started. And so over the course of the year, staff are working in their PLCs to determine which students will be in which group based on the data from their unit test, from the diagnostic, and from their MyPath information to determine who's in what group. They are able to work with our inclusion coach Karen Soini and our building instructional coach, Annie Larson, to look at how that might look, how they're gonna fit it in. Some grade levels are doing it teachers independently. Some grade levels have some pushing with paraprofessional help, and some grade levels have an additional learning support services teacher who provides help in math in the classroom. So that's how we're working towards that. I want to talk about the social emotional goal. We said that we want 100% of students to report that they feel a sense of belonging, safety, inclusiveness, and connection. And that came from last year's end-of-year educational effectiveness survey. And if you flip over here, it's, I guess it's the fourth page, you can see it shows the deal over the last couple of years from 2022 on. And what you'll notice is in the last year, there's a significant number of areas that had drops. And as we looked at that as a team, we realized, gosh, this is something we don't want to discontinue. Obviously, we hadn't made the growth that people had expected we would, so we need to take a better look at it. So one of the things we did in the fall was to, keeping in mind that the EES survey is only for fourth and fifth grade students. So we had K through 3 students who weren't accounted for in this data. So our team developed a survey in-house that was given to all K through 5 students this fall. And if you flip to the next page, you can see what the result was for that, the percentage of students who felt like those statements were true. So it was interesting to look at what just fourth and fifth grade thought compared to what K5 thought. We're gonna give that same assessment three times during the year this year to monitor, how is that changing? Is it going up? Is it going down? And what's going in place for that? We have five professional development days that are in-house that are not led by our Learning Services team, that our staff at Island Park identified in the spring, as wanting to focus on Tier 1 social emotional support. What do I do for kids? How do I help them achieve success? And how do we help turn these things around? And those lessons or those professional developments are being planned by Karen Soini, our inclusion coach, Kelsey Campbell, who is our special education coach, and our building coach. So those three have teamed together, taking what the staff has identified as a need to be able to meet the needs of students, and presented, they had two of these professional development sessions so far, and there are three more to go. Our PBIS and our diversity, equity, and inclusion teams are able to review that data and to plan support. So they're planning events and activities in our classroom. For example, the assemblies that we have each month that will focus around some of these kinds of things that we want to target for kids to show growth. One of the other components that we realized was important this year was to interview families of students who feel like they're underrepresented populations. So for example, it could be neurodivergent students, students with different ethnicities, or families who don't have a typical structure. And I've sent out in our newsletter and had invited staff to do the same, to ask families to reach out if, if they self-identify as a underrepresented population. And it's been interesting in those conversations, I've had four so far with families, just to learn about what their experience has been like in school, not just for them, but for their kids. What are we missing? What don't we know? And it's just, it's mind-blowing the things that we think we really are, we've got it all together, we know we're doing, but someone will say something, and I'm like, oh my gosh, we hadn't ever even thought of that. So it's been invaluable to learn what do these kids need and what do families need to help, to help boost how kids move up in school, being in school. Let's see. And I think that's it. Do you have questions or anything that maybe our teachers might be able to give you some more insight on about what it actually looks like in the classroom?
We mentioned the professional development for the, the teachers about really the district like SEL and stuff. Did you say those teachers self-identified, or were they like identified by someone else, like by yourself, or by an instructional church?
Great question. I can clarify it very well. In the spring, we asked the staff, you know, what are your wants for next year's professional development? And the staff, and the staff needed people to be able to give input, and they took a survey, and that was what had the most. And it was, it was a resounding, yes, we need this support to be able to meet the needs of students. They're, they're coming with more challenges than we as a district have experienced before. You're getting vague notes from the
We're gonna make that change.
Yeah. So we're trying to be responsive.
And how's the outreach to the, I forgot your, your word again, sorry, like the non-traditional families, like, how's that, how's that going? Because I know, you know, when we reach out to families, a lot of times, just, you know, from like my PTA days or whatever, that often we'll get the same 10 families back, or sort of responses can be.
Yeah, it's a great question. So it's the first year in this role of this school, so you don't have a whole lot of, I don't try. You don't have a whole lot of history on what parents or what families were actively involved. The families that have come forward to have a conversation with me, and we've met, are families that I hadn't known about in my two years previously as an instructional coach, but that doesn't mean that they weren't active. So our, our hope is that as many as want to, we'll come into it. So far, just for, but we'll keep asking. Go ahead.
Yeah, can you give in it for, for at least even non-educator? Can you give an example of what is taught in, under the domain of numbers and operations?
Let's have, let's have these folks.
Um, for the four-five split, I don't know, for the four-five split, one of the units that we did was number sets between addition and subtraction. So finding strategies on how the students could do that. In my class in particular, most students felt, I know how to add and subtract, but iReady gives other grade strategies as standards get more complex throughout middle school and high school. Really good strategies of how to break down numbers in order to do that. So for fourth grade, they focused on addition and subtraction. And then for fifth grade, it was focused more on multiplication and division. So it is no longer simply just long division and standard algorithm, which some students already know, fantastic. But iReady again gives great strategies on how else can we present this to get the product or the motion.
And then in second grade, right now, we have the big hurdle of two-digit addition and two-digit subtraction. There is a tiny bit of magical thinking happening in room nine. Which numbers go where? We'll have to take a clarify. That's it. I think every day, I have said, if you only have three cupcakes, can you really give them away? And there's a clear no. And yet, when three are coming up, there's a changing rate. So right now, the big, second grade has a huge hurdle to get to add and subtract accurately and efficiently to a thousand by the end of the year. So it's a big jump to go from first grade to second grade. And that's where we are.
Thank you. I always think of numbers and operations as like phonics are to learn to read. It's kind of that conceptual foundational skill to build numbers.
Appreciate it.
I, I, I just feel like there's, that's, you know, math is an interesting world, right? And we learn math in, in a certain way, and, and it's changed many, many times over the years. And so I just think that, you know, those explanations for those of us that are trying to help our children, and without having to go through and like read the entire chapter of how to do it, is to understand those, what you guys are talking about.
I will say also, iReady is the great family letter. And I know lots of our teachers send those home either physically, or you can do the PDF to family members. And I've had many emails where parents are just telling me thank you, because now I know how it's being taught as opposed to, because I also just learned standard algorithms. And even with iReady myself, and having to reteach myself new strategies on how to do addition, subtraction, multiplication. So those are great resources also for home, you know, family talks as well.
Thank you for clarifying that the math has not changed, just the instruction.
Yeah, yeah. You're trying to find the ends.
Yes.
Right. Yeah.
We could, though. It sounds like in Lord's class, they are, so.
Other questions for Island Park?
Okay. Well, what do I have to add to that? Because we're all kind of really aligning in our, both our goals and our school improvement plans. We're just kind of repackaging it and framing it in a different, in a different way. Would you guys agree with that? And so much of what they already shared with you is also going on at Lake Ridge. And we're, we're also doing all of our professional developments and that kind of thing and working with our shared coaches. So a lot of what I prepared to share with you tonight is, would be a repeat of what my colleagues just said. Also, I didn't prepare videos and that kind of thing because Also, um, I didn't prepare videos and that kind of thing because you just visited Lake Ridge, where I highlighted at least for you, um, three of our four priorities that's bulleted at the beginning of our, um, school improvement plan this year. So with that said, I'm just going to skip to, um, you know, what, what our, our SIP really seeks to accomplish, kind of a high level through line through all of the goals and actions that's in there. And it, it's really seeking to put, um, theory into practice. Through the goals and the priority actions, we're, we're, we're seeking to create the conditions or design the learning environments and instruction to maximize student access and opportunity and create those conditions needed to unlock their, their potential and then shift the ownership and the driving of that, um, learning into students' hands and abilities and more than teachers. So that's kind of a, I don't know, a broad, um, through line of what undergirds the entire school improvement plan. And our work is grounded in the work of John Hattie and the physical learning, um, research base that Ray Smith has come out and traded all of this on and worked on all of this on. Um, and I would guess that that's the most widely referenced educational researcher or research base. It's a meta-analysis of all the things, all of the other, um, programs, package programs, universal design, Danielson's framework, Marzano, all of these, um, places that we go to find what works best to improve student learning, um, is all founded on or references John Hattie's work and this whole learning work. So he boils down what we should be doing in improvement work, um, or what works best to positively impact student learning to one single sentence. In fact, I was just in a training where he came on, um, today, right before coming here, where he came on and he said, if I had to boil it down to one sentence about what we should be doing in school, it's about teachers seeing learning through the eyes of their students and students seeing themselves as their own teachers or as drivers of their, their own learning. And so that's what all of, all of our goals and academic, um, our academic learning goals and our social emotional behavioral learning goals are attempting to move, move the needle towards. So, and yeah, that's, that's it. I'm, I'm happy to go into more detail, but just looking at the time, I thought I'd whittle it down to that. Since it is really captured in here a few.
Yes, some of your comments are dovetailed with, with my, like, one of my impressions, which is clear that I already diagnostic data now underpins a lot of the school improvement plans uh, on the objective side for matters of what achievement looks like. I think one of the things, and maybe this is more a question for Fred, is, you know, harmonizing some of the terminology between the school improvement plan, some use typical, some use growth. Some of the language difference, I mean, I was trying, I was thinking of actually put together a chart of what exactly like that objective is and why it may, you know, if there's a reason for being different from school to school or they should be similar. Um, I mean, also put a pin in that as well as making sure that, you know, growth we see in the various cohort groups, right? Like, you know, what does that mean? I guess one question, since we hear a lot that each student should be achieving one year's growth. I mean, I guess a further question is, what does a year look like? Is it national? Is it from Mercer Island? But however that's defined, what's the current rate of the, the percentage of students that are achieving a year's growth at each school?
My name's. So last year I had a typical second grade classroom and in diagnostic in reading and in math to measure a year's growth. In reading, I've been highly trained thanks to the Mercer Island School District, and I know how to differentiate, I know how to use my materials, I know how to use my people. And in the diagnostic, kids get a typical, so that typical in the growth, they get two scores, every child does. When I have doubt, my students in readings, all but four surpassed their stretch group, above four. In math, where I was learning the new curriculum and literally turning the pages, I got to know it and going on PD, only four children surpassed the stretch group. Teachers' behavior matters. The more we're trained, the more we understand what our kids are doing now and not yet doing. When we change our practice, change the materials, change the time, change the environment, whatever it is, we're going to see results. So the reason you're hearing two words is because every child gets two scores. They get a typical and stretch.
No, I, I understand the, the difference in terminology. I'm just saying what those goals are, if we're looking at typical, if we're looking at stretch, what we're pegging success to varies when you compare from school to school. It sounds like we're also not entirely clear like what the current rate of students are that are getting a year's worth.
I'll tell you the current rate.
Okay.
Uh, so last year we had on average of K five, seventy-one percent of students making a year's growth or more. Then the median is like a hundred and eighty percent because some of our students were making like three hundred to four hundred percent years growth. But the median can be deceiving, right? But we still then have twenty-nine percent of students who are not making a year's growth in a year's time. But many, many of those students are achieving highly. They have their ending the year at or above their grade level, but they might have started there too. That's why that's our focus this year because their achievement level is right on or above standard, but their growth level is lower. And so we're looking to close that gap of the twenty-nine percent who didn't make a year's growth, primarily those of whom are at or above their level.
And, and for years growth, we're still talking national growth?
Yes, normative.
Yeah, normative for the na, for the nation.
Correct.
I, I have a question just about that, that kind of tracking. Like, um, does the, the system allow you to kind of like pair like? I'm not going to use the right terminology for this, this like a T-test, right? Is it like pairing like the, the, like, is it looking at how students do the beginning of the year and students at the end of the year and is it saying like overall how, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yes, yes. So actually this year, um, something we learned, we got this tool, who's that org, who's the?
Brittany was the one I'm not sure.
Okay, there's a tool that, um, we can use in addition to.
Oh, the effect size.
Yes, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Um, there's a tool in addition to, obviously the I already gives us annual typical growth and the stretch growth percentages. Um, but using, uh, this new effect size calculator, it's essentially, um, a formula similar to what Hattie uses in his research for like meta-analysis of what is the effect of, um, achievement or growth from point four being a typical year. And those terms, uh, it's, it's usually the strategies being used. So, um, small group instruction or feedback or homework. And, and so you're seeing what is the effect size comparative to a year and comparative to what should be average or typical. In this case, we can take the student's first score from their I already diagnostic in the fall and their spring or even the winter to make a comparison point and see what the effect is of their running over that time. And I, we, Nova did run the report for me from last year to see, um, of our students who are at and above grade level, what was their year, their effect size and point four and above being what we want to see. And that came out to be, you know, around again seventy, seventy-five percent of students in that category, but we're still having the twenty-four, twenty-five percent that are not making that stretch or that year's growth or effect in the year's time. So we're, we're not limited to just the I already percentages when we're utilizing this format too. And I think that's what's exciting because we can see growth pretty clearly for those who are below or well below grade level. And, um, catching up to speed or above that, that trend line is pretty easy to navigate. And, and so it's the other end of the spectrum now that, um, the focus will be to make sure that, that year's growth in a year's time.
Thank you.
When it comes to effect sides, is there any sort of surprising factors when you look at Hattie's research? I mean, one of the statistics that stood out to me when we had a, a session on, uh, personalized learning was that Hattie finds that there's a negative correlation with small class size and academic achievement. And it would actually seem to suggest that's a detriment. Maybe that's an issue with sampling and terminology, who knows? But I would say it's a surprising, at least many would find that there's a negative correlation between, uh, class size and learning. Is there any other sort of marks like that where you think the effect size might not be applicable?
That actual, that point is when this class size is fourteen students or greater, there's, there isn't a difference beyond that. So there is actually an effect below fourteen students or, or less. So, uh, you know, I think there is something to be said about that. But honestly, I think with the level of meta-analyses that have been done, those top, you know, uh, factors that improves student achievement are quite accurate. You know, especially when, I think it was Jovi or Heidi mentioning what, what teachers, um, that, I had this on my board, one point six two effect size for teachers' belief in student achievement. That is, that's teacher's expectation of student achievement. That's what, three, four times a year, just by what the teacher is believing that student is capable of. And so those categories up there about who are you when you come into this room and how you're teaching your kids and what you, what you put in front of them, the conditions that you create for them to be able to perform, that matters so much. And I, I think that stands true. I don't know what my colleagues would say, but.
I have a corollary to that of a similar one is it's not just the students' belief in their teachers, but then there's also the confidence in the students and their teacher and the knowledge base of their teacher. And how credible are their teachers also has a very important, um, piece with that as well. And I think some of that research, um, as I've dug into that over the years, um, has been in different places is I'm not, some of the research of the studies that I've seen that are backed up and that aren't so much about kids are actually going to go backward because of smaller class sizes. But you're not going to see the return on that investment that that class size is not going to have as much of an effect as we might think. However, your WOLPAP blocks show you're trying to get some of those classes down to five or those groupings.
Well, yeah.
So that you can target some of that or put it around.
And that wouldn't be considered classed, I know.
Intervention.
Considered targeted intervention.
Yeah, I have a question related to the I ready, so like, or diagnostic, um, formats. Like, are there any other ways that students are getting assessed that are like not like I ready, like in digital format?
Um, there's a million, so. I ready is sort of universal overall screen, but then that gives us information that we need to dive deeper, but they're doing classroom-based assessments, so they're taking quizzes, they're taking, yes, paper and pencil and their credit tests, um, there's exit tickets, right? There's anecdotal data, there's things they're seeing in their small groups. Um, and they're working in the small group, so there's various adults seeing that different data. But we take, um, an extraordinary amount of data that is outside of that I ready diagnostic. Um, because what we want is more than one data point to, we want to kind of know what's the overall picture. But then we also want to know how do we teach to their needs and their strengths? And so we get a lot of data markers through that.
I think that's an ongoing, going to be just like an ongoing task for maybe like the next four or five years is educating families about, about that. Because I do think that people, they learn about this new thing called I ready and the kids are doing some kind of computer diagnostic and then they think that's everything. They think the whole thing is like all on a computer. There's no, you know, paper and pencil portion that there's like, and so I think there's a lot of misperceptions. And I know that, that the district and individual, you know, teachers and principals have been, have been doing like outreach to parents. But I think it's still, there's a lot of misperceptions and misunderstanding. So I think just the more visibility families can have into what's going on. Like, I really appreciated my kid being sent home with a textbook this year in sixth grade, which maybe I had to like opt into, right? But like to be able, for me to be able to look at it and, and see kind of what she's working on, like super helpful. So it's just the more we can see, you know, how it's being done. Like we, as a board, I've learned a lot when they did a little kind of like, you know, ready math challenge for us, which some of us do so well. But you know, it was really interesting to see kind of like the different approaches that are used, so.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm glad because I've heard a lot of parents are like, oh no, they're just like plopping a iPad in front of my kids' screens or like face up. Yeah, I'm glad. And I just want to, I mean, you guys know what it's like to have elementary school students in front of you and, and whatever. So I want to take an opportunity just to celebrate our staffs because children don't appear in our buildings completely ready to access math or access literacy. And there's a lot of hard, hard work that goes in, um, with all of our staff members to sort of even help our kids remove barriers to access that learning. So I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we all have extraordinary staff members who are working really, really hard to see the, um, incredible data that we're seeing.
And I think that, um, you know, just to piggyback on that, I think that there's a misassumption that because of where we are and can often provide our kids, that our kids are arriving at school ready to learn and ready to go. And I think that there's a very, uh, strong misconception that that's the case. While we might have different worries or, you know, a higher percentage of students, they're ready to learn. We have higher percentages of things that distract from that, like with all the SEL data and the anxiety and the worries and the, you know, other challenges that our students face that other students might not face in other communities. So, uh, thank you for pointing that out and, um, really looking at, um, you know, the, I think the goals go hand in hand in terms of, um, the social mo, we know that kids can't learn unless they're in a place in their minds that they're ready to learn. So thank you for wrapping it all together.
Sorry, I, um, catching up. I heard you all the way. I just saved all my questions for the end and I did prepare. Thank you, Greg, for, uh, helping me yesterday to catch up. I have a seat back yesterday. But, um, uh, I think that my only two questions is, or observations about the data that, that was shared with us beforehand. Um, it was, uh, those kids that do not do the year growth. I know that it, with the SEL survey, we cannot see who they are, but I'm, I'm very curious if they go deeper in the numbers and toward the negative or how do they feel? Like if there's something that we also have to observe there? And I don't know if, uh, there's a way to kind of, I don't know.
On the EES.
EES, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, EES, yeah, sorry. I thank you. I did not have my computer.
No.
I forgot the, the. So the EES survey, like, I, I don't, uh, if they feel less inclined to go to school or what, uh, how are they feeling? Is it the pair to their peers or not?
It's, well, just to, just to make sure I understand your question. Are you tying, I mean, are you saying? No, 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 I know, but I mean, no, but I think it's, I think it's really interesting that, um, because the EES is, is anonymous and improved.
I know.
So can you, is there a way to tie in how a student is feeling based on the assessment?
I don't think that is their growth observation that I see with two datas to. But at the same time, I'm very curious on those who are not achieving that growth are those who are making those number on the EES right lower? And, and we have to listen to them a lot more or totally the opposite. And, and seeing like where they are also in their mental health, in their emotional space that, that might help them achieve that, that year's growth. And it's an observation, it's not a.
We, we can see that at this time, we can see that by cohort groups. So if we have students who are in fourth grade who have five oh fours and then we could look at their responses for race and ethnicity or gender. We can't get at the student level from that, but we can at least look at.
That is something that to think about, like, how are we, uh, checking on that? And then, uh, on the, the one that I think it was Lake Ridge and I don't believe the, uh, I can also recall which other school. Uh, you highlighted Hispanics as a group that is, is not achieving as much. And I'm curious on if you have identified what it is, what, what are, what is different from that group than the others? If it's that they speak another language and compared the Spanish to others that don't speak the, have second language, what's different and what are the tools to, to available? Or what are we missing there that it is important enough that you highlighted it in your document?
Yeah, it's one of the, this is tricky to talk about because our N size is so small. And, and so we're talking about individual students. But, um, most of our students that are in that subgroup of Hispanic students um, are also, um, receiving support. They're, they're on some sort of support plan as well. So it's, it's kind of a co. Co-mercy.
I see that, for example, if they receive, for example, English in second language services.
Right.
Uh, why if you grab the Mandarin community, there's a disparity enough, like.
Is that it's, it's complicated partly because if you come from China, you were probably like at least a year ahead in math skills, even in a different language. So, so it may like even out.
So, so it may like even out.
And it's an observation in the sense of like, I, I think that if you highlight it, then, you know, there's questions that we have to ask on how to.
And what we found is it's not a language issue. It's not a language issue. So we, we um, how we address, so I want to go back just a, just a minute. So Christina, you were talking about um, if we get this data point on the social emotional side of the house, if you will, how do we dive deeper and find out, I, I think seek out the individuals that make you at risk? Is that kind of what you were, what you were getting at?
Then it brings me to a different lens, maybe, and I don't want to say less, but if you say that. So if you are highlighting the Hispanic, so why is that, that was that important enough? That was brought into the document? And that, that's, that's pretty much, so if, if, so I think that, that my worry is that by putting it in, that we're creating bias without addressing necessarily either issues or we go into the issues or not. So, so I am, it's more of an observation of questioning, like, why was highlighted there? And what else are we bringing there to make sure that either that is, it may be across the district, that we have to look into this community and we have to address this? Or maybe the Hispanic was irrelevant and should not have been in the records? So I, I don't know, I mean, it's something that it's an observation and, and uh reflection on, on what was.
I, well, I think it's important to watch it over time, because if we see that it is more likely that if I am an Hispanic student, that I might not be achieving a standard, then what are those underlying components? Just like you saw in the high school one, um, they have certain subgroups that it is more likely that they will not achieve at the same level as measured by As and Bs and their, and their um transcript. And so what is underlying that and what are those barriers, I think are really important. And I, and I think your point is correct, and that is we have to be sensitive, that we don't over uh generalize or make assumptions based on that data point going.
But it is there also to, to really act on it and say, let's, let's, let's dive into this, so.
Yeah, I feel like it's important to, to name that it's not as, like, when there are disparities between whatever group you're looking at, it's not a student issue, it's a system issue. There's something in the system that's not providing the opportunity for learning in a way that's benefiting students. And it is tricky to generalize when we're talking about N of five or, you know, very small. But in any case, the system isn't serving, you know, such, such gender or this language group or this racial group, and that system has to, to be improved, you know? So I feel like that's really important to name.
Can I just add one more thing with one of your questions? So the school group plan is only one way that we sort of evaluate how we're doing things. And so I don't want you to think that um, we're just looking at the EES, the diagnostic, and going, oh, these don't align up. We're talking about students over time, we have PLCs twice, well, professional learning communities, sorry to throw out the acronym, acronyms. Uh, twice a month, and then every like six to eight weeks, we do what we call as like a power PLC or academic pathways where we talk about data, we talk about student barriers, we talk about all of those things. Uh, and then we revisit it every diagnostic. So we're talking about specific students, specific emotionally, you know, needs or behaviors, as well as what we're going to do to put in place um, outside of this. Um, so we're very individualized in making sure that we're meeting the needs of students. And yes, often the two go together. If they have social emotional barriers, they definitely have academic barriers. And so we're really trying to figure out how can we sort of mitigate those? And we talk about that all the time, um, because it is, it is one of the biggest challenges in our job.
I was just going to add to that, that it's, and it's not just like, oh, these come as a package deal. This child came in with social emotional issues and academic issues, because, because it's just like a cycle, right? It's like a loop that feeds on itself. So if a child is really struggling at school and they're not getting what they need, they're not going to be in great social or emotional shape, and then that's going to contribute to like disengagement and then more academic problems. You know, it's not, it's not just like, they're not fixed characteristics.
No, not at all. And each of the students are so individual um, that we have to take those opportunities to really talk about individual students and what they need, um, because we can't make big sweeping generalizations um, in our.
And each school has a school, a student support team, where teachers can identify or families can identify a student that they have concerns about and take it to a team. And it's made up of our instructional coach, the classroom teacher, it could include a counselor, nurse, a whole group of, a consortium of people to talk about each child individually, specifically. These are the things that we see, this is what the data tells us, this is what we know about their home experience, this is what we know they need, this is their behavior they're demonstrating, these are the areas that we know they need support. And it's a, it's a thin tank, if you will, about, you know, what are the ways that we might consider helping support this child to improve and to grow either emotionally, academically, socially, in whatever way? And then the team will determine what intervention they want to take, and it's usually over a period of four to six weeks, and collect some data to say, was this intervention successful or not? If not, when you come back, all right, let's try something different. If it is successful, the team might decide, let's continue on with this, and do you want to add something or not? And as they go through that process one or two times, and let's say that there isn't a terrible amount of growth or improvement, then that group is escalated to what we call the building guidance team. And that's where the, the team of people need who are really specialized in a area, our school psychologists, our speech therapists, our special education teachers and what have you, and parents are part of that group as well, to determine, this is what we've done, this is what the data tells us, what do we think that we might want to try next? And it's a process that is constantly in evolution. And there are, just like Julie said, it's not just a one-time look in the fall at the diagnostic or at a one piece of evidence. It's real people looking at real individuals, because we know that humans aren't a product. And they are so unique, and that's why we have a student support team and a building guidance team to look at the individual needs of a specific child intensely with the eyes of many, many experts to kind of say, hey, what is your wealth of experience and knowledge telling you about what we might want to try for this child that helped them?
So in addition to you, I'm going to add on your appreciation for a second with three additional ones. Um, and I'm going to weave in a recognition that next week is American Education Week, and the twentieth is Education Support Professionals Day. And in each of your presentations, talking about it's our teachers who are here um behind, and then it's also oftentimes we call our paraprofessionals or others, those educational supports, uh, whether or not they're bus drivers or others. And so on the twentieth uh is a day to recognize them. And then on the twenty-second is our Guest Teacher Substitute Teacher Day uh next week. Um, and we can't do it without them either. And the third group is the four of you. Um, you know, last month was uh Principal Appreciation Month uh in our country, and we had your colleagues from middle school and high school here to be able to thank. But I'd be remiss not to point out your leadership and what you're doing in our classes and in our schools um each and every day. And just really appreciate the four of you. And class dismissed.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
unless someone disputes now, nope, no public input, so we will move on to recognition.
Great, thank you. Pulling up uh recognition, we're going to start with our girls soccer team, who are going to come in here. So uh, we get an opportunity to recognize um a number of our athletes for their performances on the pitch, uh, out in, on a track, uh, out on a softball field and others. Um, but there's another aspect of being an athlete, and that is being a student athlete. And we oftentimes talk about, you know, that balance can be extremely difficult. And um, I think our soccer team, your record, and then where it wound up, you lost a really tough game right at the end of the season there that knocked you out of the playoffs. Um, and so, you know, looking at your record of ten and three with three ties, you outscored opponents fifty-two to fourteen. Um, but they're here tonight because they also were named the three academic state champions. And so, um, yeah. Well, as a team, our girls soccer team had a three point nine four GPA. Uh, and I think there's a lot to be said for um, you know, the hard work you put on certainly on the field and whatnot, but also in the classroom. And so um, it is fantastic to have you here representing our school district um, in so many ways, but as academic scholars as well. So love for you to introduce yourselves, um, positions you played on the team and, and whatnot, and a couple of things about the season.
Um, I'll start, I'm Hannah Sue. I was the defensive center mid for our team, and I was this year's past cap, uh, this year's captain. Or, or past season's captain. There we go, got it.
Um, I'm Blake Lee Burke, I played wing, and I'm one of our new captains for this coming against.
I'm Jackie Gonzalez, I play midfield, and I'm one of the upcoming captains.
I'm Hannah Savoy, I was one of our co-captains with Hannah, and I played defense in midfield.
Any fans in the audience tonight that you brought along? Um, any questions or comments from the board?
Um, do you think that your sport, um, or your, your participation in sports has an impact on your academics? I mean, how do you feel about the balance that you're able to achieve?
Definitely it was a struggle, um, because we had five, like, we had three practices per week, and then two games that were like, um, normally taped up, I think, two hours of our time. So we kind of had to balance like when to do our homework and then when to kind of find a, like, balance, healthy balance between their sport and their academics.
I think like, oh, I offer that though, like, um, school is like challenging, it's a nice challenge, and it's like a good workload, but going to soccer is a nice like output. And like, it's just a good place to go, like, spend time with some of my ex-friends and just get some good laughs clear my head, and yes.
It's pretty darn impressive, that GPA.
Right.
Congratulations. If you can stick around, we'll do a picture with the board after we do a few more recognitions. Do you have time to stick around tonight? Okay, awesome. Mr. Henry, who are we going to next? So as our radio team comes in, um, I think we were able to maybe make a number of informal announcements. Um, I think my favorite uh video clip is of the one uh of Mr. Bryant's uh, getting all excited when it was finally announced. But um, this group being, you know, I think a group who is continuing to carry the torch of something that was built by a number of your colleagues who have graduated and gone on, but you've continued to learn from them. But uh, to be named the best high school radio station uh in the country and the John Drury High School Awards, um, is just an absolute testament to everything that you've been working on. Um, not just as individuals, but I think together. And under the leadership of, of Natalie and Joe, um, bringing you those opportunities. You also had some personal or some individual awards um that came out of that. And so Chloe Yang honored as the country's top student podcaster for your series on Emerald City Ethos. Sophia Voisel and Kate Lennington placed runners-up for best promo. And then Sophia, you also placed second best uh public affair show, and the KMH uh social media team earned second for the eighty-eight-nine The Bridge Instagram. So congratulations. And then Matt, you go for best sports update, uh Chloe and Nicole Henderson for best news update, uh Leah Morosky, uh Milo Berkeley, and Brendan McGuire for best sports talk show. And then also joining us tonight, our newest radio teacher, I think we have Lauren, yeah, there you are, Lauren, right there. Um, who is also KMH's news uh director and doing the underwriting for us. So we welcome you to the team of some really talented folks as well. Um, Joe and Natalie, uh, I'll turn it over, Lauren, I'll turn it over to you to say a few words, and then we'll get the students.
I'll let you go, Jill.
All right, personally, also, Dr. Rundle said it best, it's uh, you don't build a great radio station in a year or even five years. This is a, a mission that started in two thousand fifteen when I came here. Two thousand seventeen is when we invented eighty-eight-nine The Bridge, and, and it's uh, everybody who's helped with that, every student, every staff member, every board member, certainly Dr. Rundle and Jennifer McColl and Nick Wald. I was just at writing, the guy saw my ID, he goes, KMH, I love that station. So, you know, I just, I love that it's getting out there. And I also want to recognize that maybe you are, but Mia Twarken is with us, and she was honored by National Public Radio a couple of weeks before we got this award for an outstanding uh podcast she did with Congressman Adam Smith about the TikTok thing. So I wanted to make sure and mention that, that Mia is here, but uh, just really appreciate it. And these guys are stars, and we just love, love doing this. And I think uh Lauren Schecter here is our good luck charm, because we've never won, she's been here a month, and all of a sudden we're the best radio. You're doing great, Lauren.
Yeah, I would just echo what Joe said, I mean, he put it so well, but it really is through the support of our school board and, and our superintendent, um, Rundle, and um, Principal Wald and Jen McClellan, who are just like cheering us on and, and really supporting us at, at every step of the way. We're so fortunate, we have like state-of-the-art equipment and the facilities that we do, the, the staff and the opportunities to teach, teach our students, and really they just keep getting better every year. And it's so impressive, all the hard work that they, they do and how the graduating seniors can hand their knowledge and their, their expertise down to the, the younger generations. And we're just, we're just thrilled to have this award.
Can I ask a question? Congratulations, guys, it's hard earned, I've been watching the radio program grow for, for this amount of time, and I'm a big fan. Since it's timely, because we're going to be talking about improvements to the high. Since it's timely, because we're gonna be talking about improvements to the high school, and I know radio, radio facilities are on the list, can you talk a little, like, just for a second about how any of the proposed changes to the facilities will impact your program?
Well, I would say, anything we can do to consolidate, we started with 18 students when I got here in 2015, and we have over 160 in the program now. And we have a wonderful facility, but if there was a way to get it all more in one place, because anybody that's visited our studios will know, we got a couple over here, we got a couple over there, and any way that we could make an actual media facility beyond radio journalism, we have an amazing video program, and somehow to consolidate that, where we can all work together, and we can have an easier time to mentor and supervise without being in so many places would be awesome. But we've got, you know, we've got a really great thing going here and a great facility. Radio is challenged all over the country, both commercial and non-commercial, and a lot of our students go on to very impressive colleges and come back and go, you've got better stuff that I'm using now, so I'm pretty, pretty grateful for what we've got. But we certainly have some ideas on how to maybe, maybe make it better in the future, for sure.
And I think, two things that kind of caught my attention, one is, me, I think you, there were over 2,000 submissions for the NPR, so to be there is really impressive. And then also, I think there were more radio stations that submitted this year than had ever submitted before for the competition. And so, to be selected in a growing, what, what seems like a growing number of programs is even more impressive.
Yeah, in the Midwest and East Coast, it's, there's a lot really, really good stations, and these awards come out of Chicago. John Drury was a great broadcaster in the Chicago market, and to, to win, just like sports, a little bit of a West Coast bias, you know? The East Coast usually wins, so it was nice to bring one home for the, for the West Coast this year.
Congrats, as a huge fan of Radiolab and KEXP, I'm very proud of everything that The Bridge does, and hopefully will continue to do and build even bigger and better, but it's definitely a crime gem, like, and within our school district, and congrats.
Yeah, as a former student, I was an editor of a newspaper, so a little bit different medium, but as a former student journalist, I'm so proud of you guys, and I listen to whatever I get a chance to listen to, but I brag about you all the time, like, all the time.
Students, do you want to introduce yourselves, and kind of what you're up to right now with the radio station, kind of your involvement there, to give you a chance?
Sure, I can start. My name's Brooke Yulaw. I'm a junior, and me and I were nominated for best PSA. Unfortunately, we did not win, but now I'm working with the music team, so that's kind of my purpose is.
Yeah, my name is Mia Tarkin. Yeah, like I said, I work with Burke Yulaw, and I'm part of a couple of different teams, but at the moment, I really love doing interviews, like, I play what I was nominated for, and so, I've just been pumping those out, and it's just really fun to like be able to speak to new people. And it's, it's such an amazing program, because I would have never like dreamed of being able to like talk to a congressman in real life. It's just like, the connections are insane.
My name is Chloe Yang. I host two podcasts, Emerald City Ethos and Eating Adventures with Haley, where we eat around Seattle and for food restaurants.
My name is Sophia. For the John Drury Awards, I got second for my public affairs program interview with our state representative, Tanzen, which was super cool. And these days at the station, I run our website, and I am also host of a weekly feature called STEM News.
I'm Sam Pador. I run a weekly music show on Sundays, and I'm also a part of the music team.
My name is Holly Odiyevich. I am the director of engineering at The Bridge. I think I really appreciate all of you guys, because your funding means that I get to fiddle around with expensive toys. You know, it, it really keeps it running, and we have just some really, really cool technology at The Bridge. And like Joe said, a lot of, some colleges don't even have what we have, which is just amazing, and I thank you all, so.
I'm Haley. I'm a senior. I'm currently the coordinator of student staff, so I help oversee all the radio students, make sure we're all connected and get to know each other. I also co-host a podcast called Eating Adventures with Chloe.
I'm Leah. I'm a third-year in the program, and I have the show called Bobber Flop, and I'm also part of the sports team, and I love doing, playing my play broadcast. I think it's super cool to be able to do that.
Congratulations. Then the soccer team will have to do it, and you'll get your own. Other recognitions for the month. Calling out, this is Native American Heritage Month, and Native American Heritage Day follows Thanksgiving, and September 28th will be Thanksgiving Day for a lot of our families to come together as we take a pause from school, and then the 29th being Native American Heritage Day. And I always like to take the, take a moment just to remind us that, though not recognized federally, the Duamish tribe here locally is the, Mercer Island is the home of our native and indigenous people as part of the Duamish. Federally, it is on the Snoqualmie tribe land, from a federal recognition, all part of the Coast Salish people. So, a great month of celebration and recognitions there, and those are. And a quick add-on, so in Duamish, Mercer Island means place where Gooseberry Bushes grew. Place where, where Gooseberry Bushes grew. We have a lot of recognition of indigenous cultures throughout the district, but I figured a good starting place is understanding what people call the Mercer Island.
All right, moving on to partial governance process monitoring, board policy, 1801 facilities and capital assets discussion and direction to superintendent to develop bond resolution.
Great, so I'll bring Brandy at the start. After our lengthy process and continuing to move on, I think the task tonight is to hopefully leave here with the directions from you as a board of where we go next with our attorneys to draft a resolution, if that's the direction that you do want us to go in. We're looking for, you know, really honing in on the exact projects we're gonna do, looking at that target number, so that we can begin that process. Before we get to that discussion, though, you had some questions last time that you wanted to know more about, particularly with our middle school project. I also want to acknowledge the parents and the staff and the students who are all part of this process who are here tonight, as well as our partners from Methune. But I'll turn it over to you, Brandy.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Rundle. I think there were kind of two primary areas that you wanted to talk about with the middle school. One was around the instruction options, the four options, and understand a little bit more about that. So, join with Methune is here tonight, please, to discuss that. And then we also wanted to do a little bit of a dive on the fourth option, which was the mass timber, and really what is mass timber and what is embodied carbon? Just for a deeper understanding about those two. And then I think the last slide in the presentation deck is a slightly modified worksheet based on what we heard at the last meeting, and is still up for discussion about what kind of wood.
While we're getting set up, I also want to recognize the Mercer Island High School cross-country team. I was out sharing my son, really impressive athletes, so learning a lot in the roots. Sure, well, thank you all for the time tonight. I'm Fred Connelly with Methune. My colleague, Joan. We have been leading the Islander Middle School process in collaboration with Brandy and team, and a lot of great conversations with you all, as well as many of the stakeholders here beyond. And there were a number of questions that I think were still on the table that we were hoping to address tonight. And so, this is our agenda for tonight, which is what Brandy just outlined, relative to priorities, a few of the options that we have in terms of bond funding and base scope versus potential additive options. Also, a more specific conversation around master timber, we'll do a few minutes, and we brought some take-home literature as well, and kind of talk to that. So, if there's anything else that books long to cover, please, please weigh in.
So, we'll begin with possible program construction options, again, you know, honing in really on those pieces that you wanted to hear more about, not necessarily discounting any of the other components or conversations we've had. But breaking it down to the priority options, if you recall, there was a process where a lot of ideation came forward. Again, the base scope has really been created for efficiency, both of cost and program, which was our charge. Along the way, there were goals and opportunities and priorities that would enhance and allow a school program to be beyond that base scope. And so, what you see on the left is the options that the community of educators and committees and students that we worked with really helped highlight as the highest priorities. Last time we were here, we wanted to make sure that there were some that are still shown on gray on the red. If you want to have any conversation of those, please let us know. We don't have prepared detail on them, but there are additional other options that were considered. There are four that we're here to share a little bit more information on, and so, as we go through them, what you'll see is the cost point or the option consideration. There's a value for that, if it's elected to move forward. There's a total at the bottom, of course, it's a, it's a, it doesn't have to all come together to make that very clear. And then, as you see on the right-hand side, some of the reasons of that process of prioritization is that, you know, there's so much we could do, but when you add it all up, it does create a pretty sizable price tag, so it's there for your reference. Now, as we move into the first option around multi-purpose assembly performance space, you'll see this format repeat itself. So, we'll start with really talking about what the base scope is. The project provides a shared drama and choir rehearsal classroom. So, instruction, it is large enough that can be informal performances, similar to a space that they're using now, which is classroom-sized, but very informal component. The potential enhancement would be really to provide a separate performance and meeting space that is in, at its core, multi-purpose. Allows the district a lot of educational flexibility, potential for expanding storage, performance spaces and features, providing assets for performance that provide technical education, light booths, et cetera, and things like that, as well as an expanded venue capacity, so large enough for about 150 seats in a black box format, so really flexible. You can move it around, and it's really specifically opportunities to create not a regular seating theater, but a really flexible venue. The value for this option is around seven and a half million dollars in 2024. There are some, here are some examples of spaces and the types of places, of course, we haven't designed it yet, but the sense, sensibility is that multi-purpose as a queue is key, and so, providing lighting, but also a venue that can function for events, for district professional development, for, for teams, perhaps guest lectures, et cetera. And then, when we speak specifically of this option, we wanted to address educational enhancements, and then some considerations that the board should have in mind when we're having the conversation. Educational enhancements, spoke briefly on this, but it does support a broad range of performances. The ability to have a space in the district that would allow a flexibility of performance type, size of audience, and intimacy is a really important educational enhancement. It creates an opportunity for a district-wide professional development space. This would create the ability to have a standalone performance space, could be used by IMS, but also offers opportunities for elementary and high school, potential for community, and that potential shared doesn't interrupt the drama and choir classroom construction that would still be occurring in the rehearsal space. And then, very specifically, for a middle school community, often this is a place and space where having an ability to create a performance in a more intimate venue that is less imposing or scary in some ways, is really appropriate for middle school age. So, as an educational enhancement, offers that venue to the district. Considerations, the additional square footage on the campus would be additional space to manage, operate, particularly if it is becoming a rental or a shared use facility, operation of that, scheduling of that is something to consider. And of course, maintenance of, of both immediately and over time. And then, the one thing we would also like to note, we are planning for, if the board elects not to pursue this at this time, we also know that you may want to consider it at some point in the future of Islander Middle School, but it would be more costly and impactful to disrupt it a little later, so just putting that on. Moving on.
Do you want to go through it in the last, or do you want to? So, with the performance space, I know that the middle school hosts events like, I don't know, like probably all-school jazz concert, or candidate forums, or whatever. Is that something that would fit into the performance space, or would those continue to be sort of hosted in the, I'm gonna say lunchroom, but I'm sure that's not what it's called, but it's not having lunch. But I don't know if our principals have any thoughts on that, or if it's.
Well, it kind of depends on the, you know, on the decisions that are made and the size of the space. For sure, like a jazz performance could put it out there, probably not a full band, because there wouldn't be potentially enough seating for it, for audience, but definitely candidate forums, we could see lots of small performances go through our drama, through the elementary drama, and through high school drama being served. We'd see choir concerts there. Generally, we imagine there are lots to use for this space.
And can I just ask one clarifying question? If you go back one slide, sorry, one more, yeah, no, one more. The $37.5 million, is that including the enhancements that are in orange there, or that's in addition?
Thank you for that clarifying. And so, yeah, the way to read this slide is that the sum totals of orange add up to 14.5 for the four that we're here to discuss in detail today. But everything in gray was priced out at 23 million. We don't have, we don't, today, we don't have exactly which of each was what value, but it would be, the 37.5 would be everything in orange and everything in gray.
So, we're in that slide, so when the first bullet point on the gray side, the enhanced PV solar is the panels per se, right? Not the capability of, correct?
Correct. It would be EV-ready. On the conversation around rehearsal and multi-purpose, you know, where it is located also is important. So, adjacent to commons and supporting the community features that are already there, so that if you had an ensemble, it could be part of a larger system of performances for music specifically. And we can come back, of course, to any of these. Tree wells, the colloquial term for the conversation around, I think last time, you were, you know, not really sure what this was, and kind of what benefit it is, or just a little more detail. So, when we plant trees. So when we plant trees in civic environments, one of the biggest impact over soil compaction, for example, so we end up, that's why you see trees in planted beds. So the base scope is trees in planted beds in the courtyard space and concrete courtyard paving. This potential enhancement allows those shade trees to exist in a very healthy way and provide opportunities for drainable paving and become part of the storm management system, but without the planted beds requirement. The value is about $500,000. And this really is, again, the photo that we were looking at last time that was a little bit hard to discern. We've gone it up. I will try to describe this in a way that, oh, I don't think this works on it, does it? You know, as we plant our tree, it essentially is a protection system that gets infilled with soil that is designed to accept water for, so part of our stormwater infiltration system. That essentially like a plastic acryte, if you can imagine. And I'm sure there's a more engineered structural term for it. Allows the tree roots to very quickly find their grounding and root to optimize the growth potential, as well as to then use the water that is a resource there. So and you can walk directly on it. It doesn't suffer the compaction. And so there's a wide variety of benefits. The paving that is immediately over the system then would be porous. And so rain, as it falls through, would move into the tree wells. If hopefully that helps a little bit, there's more technical biological terms we can add. But the educational impacts certainly is a sustainable educational opportunity. Another social, emotional learning perspective is a middle school environment. It's been really important to talk about this courtyard as a student space for student agency and independence. And what we have planted bed areas, those often become spaces where we're trying to keep students out of, or there are no-go zones. And so this technology allows us also to open up that courtyard in a way that doesn't have those restrictions and components. But considerations. Reduced maintenance, annual and long-term. These are no-maintenance-type infrastructure that goes under the paving. It doesn't require not only the reduced maintenance of actually the system, but it also uses maintenance with the planted beds. It supports healthier tree and soils. Trees grow much quicker, much faster within this system, because the tree roots essentially are not compacted in any way and have access to the most ideal soil structure. This will, in the way that we're using it, benefit the Phase 1 of IMS, because we can get a little bit of shade on that east-facing facade quicker, because our trees will grow quicker. And unfortunately, it is not an option to install at a later date. So it is a technology that we would need to, in the courtyard space, we would need to optimize now.
So, and when you mentioned that this also is part of the tree, the, sorry, the stormwater management, like if we would not go to this route, I'm just, I have another question. How would that, the stormwater management look like? Would it be similar to what a school space right now, or?
It's a great question. This is taking some off the load. So we currently designed it into how we're approaching our stormwater management. There is a pond on site and there, if, you know, if we, if we don't go this direction and we overload the pond, then we would need to do some half-barrel vault or some other structured storage. But this is helping offset it. It is not replacing in total, but it's a part of the whole system. I wish I had a little bit more specifics on cubic water flow. That is escaping me tonight. The third, partial cooling in all classrooms. There's a couple of components to this. The base scope for the existing Phase 1 teaching space in the classrooms, there would be no change. The new classrooms in the base scope would then be designed to match that existing HVAC system with improvements that have come on board around controls or other pieces that we could improve based on what we've learned from Phase 1. This potential enhancement, as you can see, it does have a total of $3 million. Since the last time we had a conversation, we've kind of subdivided that so we can be clear where the dollars might be in that option. There can also be a range then that we talk about within this option about what the approach could be. One is that there are, it has become clear that there are some adjustments that we can make to the existing systems under the control side of things to better tune the building toward heating and cooling, as is. But to increase the cooling capacity, we could then add fans. So the $1 million bracket you see for this, under this potential enhancement, is to add ceiling fans to all classrooms, Phase 1 and Phase 2, to enhance comfort and air distribution. We could go beyond that then to increase the cooling capacity, but add a heat pump to really reduce the temperatures of more than a fan could. That is the $2 million of the $3 million option. So we wanted to subdivide that from the last time we talked, just because there is a range of considerations that if we didn't want to go all the way through, there could be some other conversations we have about what value we would want to hold to this.
Is the cooling to 80 degrees with, including the heat pump? Or would that be just with fans? Do we think that would be sufficient generally?
Yeah, we believe that the fans and the adjustments to the existing system and the fans would be in the existing portion of the building that would be made and the new. There are no ceiling fans in the base case for the new construction would allow us to maintain that 80 degree. If we wanted to go beyond that, then that's when the heat pump comes into play.
And I think that this is when it ties together. So that, assuming that is, if we don't go the timber, since timber holds different temperatures and et cetera. So this will be for kind of the worst, what is the steel? Building will go over to 80, or is, is, will be with the timber?
Yeah.
Options.
I will say at this point, I don't know if you've dialed this particular option into the structural system. But I would say, you know, you're talking about mass timber, mass storage of heat there, right? Versus the steel that is a temperature range. There certainly could be, and again, as we move forward, if there's anything about the way in which we're designing it that could additionally help the cooling, we'll certainly employ that technique. I saw two hands go up, and I'm not sure which went up first.
Yeah, so for the heat pump, is that not only be added after the fans are added? Or can it be like a separate thing as well?
It could be added at any point.
Okay, so those are basically two like separate options.
Related, but then different strategies.
So looking ahead, sort of to like the next, I mean, and using our imaginations, to the next like five to 10 years of global climate change. And then also, we were lucky this year, but our usual smoke seasons, which includes several weeks of having to keep the windows closed. How does that affect, you know, the partial cooling action versus the heat pump option versus? Just crossing our fingers.
I, I think in the conversations with the engineers, we believe that the million-dollar solution will address shoulder seasons. Right? So the September and May, where we seem to have those challenges, we will not be able to achieve 80 degrees in the building on 107 degree day in August without the additional heat pump.
For other strategies, is there, what about shading, like window shades? Is that a potential strategy? And would that cool significantly for, you know, relatively cheap dollars?
There's a lot of strategies that we can employ, both interior and exterior window shading, shade trees, orientation of the building, type of glazing, you know, UV, how much heat is actually brought in through that glazing piece. We'll be looking at all of that. The, this specific one is an option that would take us above the cost point of the base that is, all of the things that I just mentioned are kind of in that base design analysis.
So I guess like in the large picture, yeah, like sort of my interest is when we think about the longevity and lifespan of buildings, it is trying to be as sensitive as possible to preserving the possibility of year-round school at some point in the future. And in order for that to be a possibility, we have to have at least the facilities that are capable and starting to, you know, in a cost-appropriate way, like get to a point where not only can we deal with, you know, heat periods like during the typical school year, but also eventually like preparing for the possibility of year-round school.
And also, just to build on that, like the idea that we're going to get that our summer weather will stay nearly in summer, you know, within the next three to five years is maybe not. Maybe wishful thinking, because I'm thinking a couple of years ago, we had that June where it was 110 degrees for like 10 days straight. And that wasn't summer, that was in school and session, right? Like, so I'm just, I want to be mindful and aware that our students will need protection from, you know, the effects of global climate change as they are also trying to have, you know, the best situation they can get. And, you know, just to make sure that we are planning for that and doing everything that we can do now in this planning phase to make sure that the end product is something that will serve our students, no matter what hap, well, not no matter what, but you know, like, no matter what happens, best-case scenario to our environment in the next decade or so.
I will say also that I, I moved into a house that did not have a heat pump or any ceiling fans in May. And it was so hot by June, like it was easily over 80 degrees every day. And if I were a kid in school, I could not have worn a diddly squat. You know, like it was just like intolerable.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So the million-dollar would impact that other than like something out of season, extraordinary, yeah. And then the $2 million added heat pump would basically be a cooling system throughout the building that would make it year-round.
Brings up lower than 80.
Okay.
It would not bring it all the way to a 60, 65.
We did explore, so to all of the comments that have come, I think, you know, hearing that really the educational impact is fewer structural impacts during heat events. There are a variety of different ways we can design that in. Mechanicals, mechanical system is one of those. Dan, you're mentioning, and others are mentioning, systems that are more passive or in how we arrange the building, how we use structure, to Christina's comment around mass timber or steel, how many, how our thermal envelope operates, all of those components that we could do that aren't necessarily a direct cost add. This mechanical solution then is a cost add. We did have a variety of levels that went much deeper and like what you saw at the high school, right? To really bring it down to a fully cool building was more than this. So this is our approach to try to find that balance between appropriateness, impact and long-term flexibility. There are more dollars for a deeper bunch of cooling, if you, you know, if you'd like to explore.
But it's, as you're pointing out, this, this coming slightly also to pay for that extra.
Coming to our mass timber hybrid structure, I'll kick it off and then we have more detailed information. Our, our base scope is really an all-steel structure, naturally existing. This is a conversation that we've been having as a committee and certainly the board raised before the project even began. So really thinking about what a potential enhancement is. There is an asterisk around $3.5 billion, because there is a lot of volatility in the insurance, which Brendan will talk about, and other components and ways, and how far we lean in the mass timber and how we design the building, that changes what that cost is. But the $3.5 billion is a place in which we're going to begin. Some of the things that you asked last time specifically on mass timber is, are there grant funding opportunities? Coincidentally enough, in the meantime, there has been a 1.8, I'm going to say billion, am I right? Million, million, dang it, more money is wanted for this. Million grant opportunity that we are interested in pursuing with the district is of course not a guarantee. There are preferences for low socioeconomic projects or districts and benefits for those communities, but we could magically pursue around $500,000 mass timber education grants. You had a conversation or wanted more information on maintenance durability, aligning with existing building architecture, whether the construction and structural safety, all of which Brendan's going to cover. So if you don't mind, just for a minute, we'll dive into that.
Thanks, Jordan. This is a topic that's near and dear to our hearts. We have done a lot of mass timber projects and it's an area of innovation and evolution in the construction and design industry that's very real-time. So there's a lot of kind of evolving information. There's a question about what is mass timber? And definitely to residential construction, a lot of us think of timber as maybe stud-framed wood walls that we see in our houses. This is very much not that. This is a larger dimension timber system. And mass timber is really an umbrella term for a variety of technologies. The next, the next slide will illustrate what I'm trying to say. So these are, these are images of different typologies of mass timber. What this really means is using larger dimensional wood, either kind of single elements of wood or kind of combined or aggregated wood elements for both structural integrity, but also resistance to fire and durability. And so CLT is from top to left, I'll try to go through this quickly, but cross-laminated timber. This is a large-span panel that actually is a sort of a sandwich of two-by-wood members that are kind of glued together under a lot of pressure. Is a thicker kind of spanning panel, aluminum beams, timbers. These are things you commonly see in a lot of buildings in the Northwest. These are kind of, again, sort of glued together, kind of two-by elements to create larger span capabilities. DLT is very similar, but it has interesting properties because of the grooves and some of the kind of negative spaces that are within the panel. And then MPP is really kind of the same idea, but more plywood veneer system that are locked together. And so the last one, NLT is maybe less common, but it's nail-laminated timber. This is common in Boulder buildings, so we tend to see around the northwest area. Anyway, all of these in combination are very effective. I want to sort of key things to Jody, to your question about climate change and the sort of challenges that we're facing right now is that these are all lower-carbon solutions for buildings. So when we think about the benefits of mass timber, there are many. And one of the ideas that we've, we see repeatedly in conversations with contractors is the reduction in construction schedules. These systems are prefabricated, pre-engineered. So the idea, there's actually less noise, less onsite fabrication time, less impact to neighbors. And also usually a reduction in schedules that are associated with this, because they snap together like Lego kits essentially. There is also a reduction in amount of staff and kind of onsite parking and things like that. So the advantage is relative to how this works. But I would say the bigger part of the conversation is really about the carbon impacts. And there's a significant reduction in the body of carbon using this material compared to steel and especially compared to concrete. And so as we think about the kind of global warming potential, we'll get into more of the metrics that they get in the next slide. It's about 200% better than a steel frame project. And so here we see a series of slides that look at, I won't read all the fine print, but steel, concrete, and CLT or kind of mass timber strategies really kind of reduce the amount of embodied carbon and global warming potential in a significant way. There are also a number of other advantages relative to the quality of the space and the learning potential that we'll get into in just a minute. But these are some more, the kind of kilograms of equivalent carbon per meter square. This is sort of more international way to measure this. We see that as we can look in comparison at the mass timber prototype, especially with the idea of kind of sustainably sourced wood products, it really kind of drives this down to a very, a very lovable place. So in addition to all the kind of environmental and global warming potentials, the idea of what we call biofilmic environment is another great addition or potential of this strategy. And so biofilm is a term that E.O. Wilson has kind of shown a light on, which is really about the love of life and really is about a connection, inherent connection to nature and natural things. And so that can be used out to the beautiful forests outside of Islander Middle School. But it also really is kind of the quality of materials that surround us. And so by using mass timber and really kind of showing this off a little bit more, it's more of an innate emotional connection that students have, which in turn promotes higher aptitudes and learning outcomes in spaces. And there's a lot of that in the points here. That last slide was talking about test boards being three times higher and a lot of different studies that have been done relative to this. The biofilm connection, natural environments, and also one of the other things that we use a system like mass timber, we're not adding ceiling layers and additional framing and other elements that actually require additional time or additional carbon and additional manpower to install. So it's less finished layers. And the idea that untreated wood surfaces, it's a healthier classroom space. These are using toxin-free adhesives and we're creating health positive interior environments. There's a, a few questions about durability and maintenance, without getting into too much detail. Maybe some of us in the district have seen older buildings that are made out of wood that are used. Wood was used a little bit more freely and exterior maintenance is a large issue. What we're talking about here is really not exposing these systems to the weather and Northwest climate, but rather using them in protected ways for floor and interior environment panels that are kind of shielded from the exterior forces. So I just wanted to clarify that piece. We're also, the idea of a hybrid approach, which might include steel columns, which you're seeing in this photograph, is a strong consideration for this project, because it might tie to the old building and also create in the tactile range less things to be touched or kind of being maintained over time. And so if we use it just in floor assemblies, for instance, be very visible and very experiential part of the structure. But it would be less maintenance for Tony and team. So the idea also that wood structures are lighter, it's less seismic forces, there's less sort of footings and foundations of their attacks. There are other kinds of other benefits, the construction cost and schedule. And then going quickly through here. But lastly, there's maybe a lot of questions that tend to surface around, is it safe? And really, what this, one of the big advantages is with the larger dimensional systems is that it actually is resistant to fire, larger dimension structures. And you've seen trees in. Uh, larger dimension structures and you've seen trees in the forest after events, uh, they char. But they don't necessarily all burn down. The same principle you're seeing in the images to the left, uh, during certain fire events, there's certain protections and two or four hour readings that are kind of associated with different dimensions that uh, the wood tends to burn, but it forms a protective layer. It doesn't actually kind of burn all the way through. It's the same same principle as putting a protective sealant on steel with adhesive paint, for example. Um, and then the uh, the so British Columbia, there's an eighteen story examples of this, of this technology being used. So it's it's been tried and driven northwest for nationally uh, for for many years now. And it's just kind of gaining a little bit more uh, more traction in our, our community environment. Uh, the cost conclusions, um, there are a lot of uh, one of the kind of key issues in this has been the supply and demand. Uh, there is a lot more panel and kind of production of this, of this material coming online. Um, one of the um, reasons for the premium and kind of asterisk that Joanne mentioned with the three point five million is uh, is what we call builder's risk insurance. This is um, uh, sort of evolving part of the conversation without getting into a soapbox lecture about it. The uh, insurers and actuaries have placed a different valuation on any wood products. So they don't pay attention to the fire issues and the code ratings. Steel and mass timber being equivalent from a code standpoint and a safety standpoint. But the fact that it's a wood product, they assign higher insurance premium during construction for it. Um, and so it's something that we're all rallying around trying to kind of uh, mitigate, but it's a, it's one of the realities we're looking at right now. Uh, supply chain and fabrication, um, it's a, it's a relatively new technology to some builders. And so it tends to give a little bit of that back because that's related to costs so that um, what we found though is that builders do get a hold of this that it actually snaps together very quickly and are always impressed and um, uh, become adopters of the technology in particular. So uh, it's, it's a, it's a learning curve that we're all kind of real time uh, moving through. So the potential for a hybrid system, as we just mentioned, is uh, two-fold. One is that it um, it might uh, be a little bit more um, cost-effective. The idea that it also might tie visually to the existing building in terms of steel structure, which has wood uh, wood panels in it. Um, the idea that it might um, create efficiency, clear span capabilities and also the biophilic presence of wood without any maintenance issues and also maybe more holistic one MS kind of approach. Uh, lastly, I will close out, I think, over time, but we've done a lot of research on this. There's a uh, research initiative we went through to create this booklet, Mass Timber for Schools. Uh, that's been produced in combination with a number of partners on the screen here. And so it's available online. Also happy to leave, we've done some copies here uh, for you. Illustrated benchmark projects and this new strategies.
And on the last component, um, the asterisk, there is, you know, the, the three point five million. Um, there is a range of allowances that we could provide in that hybrid approach, you know, could be a one million dollar allowance up to the three point five million dollars. So we left the three point five in there, but just wanted to have a conversation about there is again on this one opportunities for us to think about what that right size of investment is for the district.
What's um, what's your recommendation for the right approach in terms of a hybrid versus um, the full timber?
In our, I guess in our internal team conversations, we do feel like there's a lot of tension with a hybrid system uh, in part because of the uh, tie and one of our kind of goals of like the unifying the kind of old and new. Um, but also for maintenance with your early standpoint, there's a lot of potential there.
Can you talk a little bit more about the, the maintenance in terms of cleaning? You know, we're all used to things get grimy, we take a go in and put on a new coat of paint. How does that work with the timber?
Great question. So um, the uh, oftentimes if it's a full mass timber system, one of the strategies is often employed is to uh, provide a sealer or kind of a uh, protective finish on things in a tactile range, usually columns, but not the ceiling. So with a hybrid system, it would actually be isolated, the wood to more of the horizontal, so the outer reach of uh, for that middle schoolers.
We have to jump in every in addition to the cleaning is, you know, the cart being run into it and get all the other, you know, damage potentially that wood takes that really the only way to get that out is to sand it out or, you know, it's, you know, yeah. Every part is sprayed on day one, but eight, you know, year ten, um, it's not gonna we're not gonna be able to go ahead and just paint it.
So the hybrid would address that too.
Yeah, the thought is that the hybrid will allow us that clear tie between the two structures without going from a steel column building to a wood column building. Um, it would allow us to optimize the mass timber, um, and you know, and there's a variety of different places and ways you can optimize it. And again, that one million over three point five million dollars is kind of in that range. Um, but then it would address a lot of the concerns or questions that were brought up and still provide uh, the carpet benefit.
Question about the um, insurance aspect, so.
Wait, can I, can I just follow up on this still? So like, that like this courtyard picture is just beautiful. So like the, the biophilia.
Oh, yes.
Just the picture in terms of still so you could take it and use much more of a timber approach in areas like that. I mean, is that what you're thinking or?
This particular photo is trying to touch on the health benefits and really um, saliently bring biophilia to life.
Well, I'm not expecting that our No, no, just in terms of the timber aspect of it rather than a bunch of concrete.
Well, I would, I would say, uh, I mean, just a um, you know, the biophilia is, is it, it's a real factor in kind of creating that connection. I think also just we're talking about Mercer being a place of gooseberries and it's also a place of cotton, climax, connect with forests. So from a placemaking standpoint and connecting your community to this land and its history is uh, I think that the rental you pointed out earlier. Uh, there's a lot there to talk about in terms of using this material. And so we're, we're trying to create the connections where we can, both inside the building, but also kind of place second, this outwork of these things.
The option that we're talking about with the cost add is really about the interior and structural application of wood, this particular image. And again, there would be maintenance uh, to wood on the exterior. We could use blue lamps like this and benches to tie the interior and exterior together. Um, that might replace some concrete benches, but isn't necessarily part of this particular cost option. So it will be more creating space like this that is an interior wood ridge space or although it's not finished, this is a a full mass timber columns, blue lamp being scanned, DLT. Um, or I think there was one more image in here or spaces like this, bringing that wood to the structural system into the interior.
Got it. Uh, and I think in the, you know, in a, in a full steel building, what you would see is the steel columns and then a metal pan deck that is filled with concrete. Then we have to cover the metal pan deck below and we have to cover um, the concrete on top. And so this just replaces that whole assembly with wood structure that is exposed.
So my, my question about is about insurance is really about this sort of hybrid idea. Like, how does the, the sort of high pricing of the insurance during the construction process work? Like, is it all or nothing? Like if we're using you know, mass timber, are we just paying like this premium on our insurance? Or is it like, this project is fifty fifty? So you're paying, you know what I'm saying?
What's interesting about the insurance that's required during construction is, you know, Brendan referred to it as a builder's risk policy. So the district has property insurance through the risk pool now. But uh, while a new building is under construction, they won't cover that. You have to go get a special builder's risk policy that covers um, the, that project in progress. Uh, so then we do those applications and we can the district can have a separate builder's risk policy or the contractor can carry the builder's risk policy. Um, it's a very lengthy application, um, and a lot of questions. Um, so I, I think we could easily represent it as both steel and wood and have a conversation around that. But it does, you know, anytime it's a wood structure, it's a lot more money.
I would say there's again the asterisk, there's a range in this one. What we wanted to do is present a conservative value and not over promise the ability to provide mass timber with a value that doesn't get us there. So again, in those conversations, we've had success with insurers. We've had some not success with insurers. Um, and it's very contingent, but this value we feel like covers that risk. If we wanted to go full in and if we want to do less or more um, select mass timber, then less than three point five billion dollars is possible.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Um, I wasn't living in Mercer Island, one of these decisions are being made, but um, is there, can you, does anybody know like why we didn't do this with the middle school? Wasn't that timber just not there like ten or fifteen years ago when a buy-in situation was made or is it cost to work? Can you talk to that?
Well, I would say um, uh, it was a very different conversation ten years ago relative to the supply chain, some of those graphs that we, there was, there were fewer options out there at the time. Uh, I wasn't part of that design conversation, but I'm sure that it was maybe thought about. Certainly, um, it's more prevalent and more proven now as a technology. And so I think that we're in a different time and space.
I think it's also been, you know, building codes to have to catch up.
That's true.
Um, with this, so while it might have been an option in twenty fourteen, it was also a more expensive option. And as you said, the supply chain was much more limited um, in its strength.
I find the bio, biophilia aspect really interesting. I had fun about that. Um, and there's a study that came out in the nineteen nineties of um, what people of different generations, like different decades, remember as the smell of their childhood. And you know, people born in the nineteen forties, nineteen fifties, it was all like, you know, wood and wax and string and things like that. And then children born in the nineteen seventies, nineteen eighties, it was like the smell of carpet and Play-Doh and um, fabric softener and all these like mostly like chemical kind of smelly pens, you know, it was mostly these kind of chemical kind of things. I love the idea that we could maybe potentially be building, you know, a, a finishing a building in a way that means that our kids will maybe that their middle school years will be thinking of like nice wood smells and kind of more like a natural, kind of promodiously natural environment rather than just like more drywall.
And one of the reasons we wanted to provide the resources, there is a lot of depth. If you're interested to go into it, there is a lot of research um, that is out there. Resources are provided, you know, in, in additional research studies, if you wanted to take a look at some of that. We highlight, tried to highlight some of those that fall into categories uh, that we thought would be pertinent to this conversation, but there's, there's quite a bit out there about the
Hey, I guess my observation is I think um, certain line items and price tags seem sort of shockingly high. I think on this, it actually seems to me shockingly inexpensive, uh, particularly for the benefits. I mean, both environmental, aesthetic uh, being an innovator. Um, I, I recently bought an old boat. It's fifty years old and it has teak parquet flooring and, and, and teak detailing and it looks beautiful. I mean, whereas like boats that were much more recent, but uh, in fiberglass and like those textiles sort of look like dated casinos, very too now. Um, so yeah, like on, on this, like I, I'm just a positive. I would go individually as all as possible.
Can I uh, ask, give a comment? Uh, and I am going to uh, with the assumption that, that the timber would be gifts. Um, through the supply of somebody that is certified in sustainability and we're not uh, buying from any place that is this uh, providing deforestation. So I am assuming that we are this part of fun. Um, and I will say, uh, comment that I learned on another meeting, uh, that uh, the wood that we buy in Washington also pays, uh, the suppliers do have to pay a certain amount to the local schools where if, if, if the woods come from certain county, those schools do receive a benefit. So just saying that if the option is equally to get it from British Columbia or from Washington, we are helping our uh, student, our other districts with uh, that decision. So, so it is, it is something that, that also um, will benefit not only us, but also other districts.
Yeah, there is districts that rely on that tremendously.
Other questions related to kind of this additional information you wanted before we get into kind of the conversation of the total project.
That's just great information.
Yeah, really helpful.
And, and, and in your sort of aesthetic judgment, no matter what, we decided it'll all sort of flow together-ish.
I feel like it's gonna be a little more
Absolutely, yeah.
That versus wood, we can, the kids can have teams.
Yeah, that's about it, conversation from day one.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
So as we move into that kind of portion of the conversation, um, we have lots of people here tonight who can also help with this um, context. We have Becky, I think that's out back there from uh, Mailam here tonight. Um, we have Ryan Swanson who's joined us from uh, Piper Sandler. Uh, we've got Eddie Peters, part of Randy's team uh, here tonight. Um, we've got our middle school team there, Mary Jo back there, um, and Doug, who we saw last time, but then also uh, Tanya Van Orden and uh, Julie Biggs. Amanda was here, she may have had to go. Um, so Amanda, so we're representing our parents and, and Julie Shay, um, there Ava, you've been part of the process at the high school along the way. Um, and then certainly Randy and Tony and Matt, who have met with me basically every Monday for the past year to keep me up to speed on things, uh, and thanks to them. So um, before we go into that though, Julie back there is also the teacher of the artists uh, who have uh, uh, put the sneakers on our walls there. And so we really appreciate uh, the new artwork. So Julie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, any other things that you wanted to make sure that they all, everyone had or before they start their conversation?
Yeah, I think um, I did a little bit of a revision to this worksheet, um, same numbers, uh, but we as you suggested, maybe the admin and crest parking and ADA were um, not really an, an optional project that those should be included. So I've included all those things you talked about on the left and you can see that that's a hundred and forty eight eight. And I would love to round these numbers, but I really want you to see the math. So I'm assuming that whatever you pick will round to something. Um, and then I'm showing each of those options again to the right that are prioritized by the staff and students and and the groups that we've worked with at the middle school. And then cumulatively show you what those add up to for total. Um, and then at the bottom, uh, just to give you a sense of where those numbers come in, um, we've reduced that cooling and mass timber to the million dollar option, just to give you the range. And on the left side, um, I thought it might be important to kind of understand what the bond implication is for that. So with a hundred and fifty million military rate of one eighty-five is a forty-six percent increase over um, the twenty twenty-five projected rate. So that's four hundred and sixty dollars a year per million dollars of assessed value. Um, and then each of those go up from, for one sixty and one sixty-five to give you a sense of where that's at. So lots of people here to answer questions, but I'll turn it back.
Can I, can I just ask a clarifying question first? Um, so you said the, the, it's the hybrid mass timber structure, is that the million dollar one and not the three point, the three point five is full mass timber? Okay. And then the partial cooling.
That, that's, it sounded like they wanted the, the three point five would give us a lot of flexibility in, in maybe, maybe hybrid, more hybrid, less hybrid, correct? Like
That, that's a range of options that we have. The, the, we know the one million will cover the hybrid version of mass timber in the project. Um, the, that we, that's why we left the three point five. That's why Randy's showing the range between the full uh, three point five or the one million.
Okay, so the one million is enough for the
For the hybrid.
Okay, what you're recommending at this point in terms of a good fit and that's kind of a cost-effective uh, option that the district might
I think three point five takes that whole structure.
Got it.
To mass timber. And the one takes those horizontal surfaces, um, as we looked at in that hybrid version. And I I do think, you know, you mentioned this, but I think it's worth repeating again that the main goal of the middle school from day one has been make this feel like one building. And you know, that's a concern, I guess I have a little bit with with creating a completely different structure and a very different feel. I think we could transition that and we have a lot of you know, wood ceilings and things in the existing building that we could really make that feel like it all tied together. But I am a little concerned about going full on mass timber in a new building and and having it feel like the old building.
And then the other clar- the, the cooling. You said, so the one sixty-five is to do the high end of both, the three point five for the mass timber and then the
Three million.
Three for the, and but the fan, that, oh, so that would be the heat pump. So adding the heat pump and the full mass timber. Takes it from the, to the one sixty-five, but to remove those and do the partial of each, which seems like is the recommendation from the experts.
Recommendation for mass timber, certainly. I think the cooling one is more of a district uh, elected option.
Okay, so that's the difference between the one sixty-five and the one sixty. Okay. Any other clarifying questions before we get into?
We have, can we take like a two minute break because we're gonna go in?
Do you want, yes, or do you want to just take ten right now and invite everyone to enjoy food?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we're gonna take ten, we're gonna take ten, we'll come back at seven twenty-five-ish.
I've been advised to kind of focus our discussion on projects, understanding, you know, where the dollars men play rather than focusing on the money. So I think the best way and happy to get other feedback, but let's first talk about the middle school. I think there's an overall feeling in the community that, you know, it needs to be finished. And kind of what, you know, the proposal for the projects looks like. And then, and then we can kind of add in additional stuff as part of conversation, but just kind of the middle school overall. Project moving forward, what your feelings are, what your concerns are.
The base project you're talking about now, like the steps to the left.
Feel free to bring me, I mean, it's not that complicated to bring that other stuff in. So like, I guess, what's your, what's your feeling on the plan, the proposed plan or plans? And, and where do you, where are you comfortable at this point in terms of where are you leaning? And what you would, if there's areas you want more discussion on?
Until like all my questions from last time really got answered, like I understand better what the optional add-ons are. Sorry, inhale perfectly fall. I'm very comfortable with the proposal, kind of as, as it stands with the orange add-ons that were discussed this evening. But my personal preference would be to leave out the heat pump. Since it is especially something that can be added later, so if the climate changes a lot faster than we're expecting, or it becomes intolerable, the shoulder seasons, or we go to like year round school year, that's something that, that we can add later. And then as far as like, I'm all, I'm team, team mass timber now. Like I was a little like, I don't know how, you know, weatherproof this is, blah, blah, blah. But as it was, as it was presented tonight, I support as much mass timber as we can, you know, squeeze in there. So it does sound like some form of hybrid is, is a reasonable choice to make, all factors considered. So I guess I'm, I'm that, that higher number there, the, the, the lower number rather, the, the
The 160.
The 160 is kind of where I come in feeling very comfortable.
I will echo some of her comments. I would say that the presentation confused me a little bit, but I think it is. I was doing the break that goes a little deeper on the reasons. And I think there's added benefits that, that were not talked there that probably convinced me that there's either a hardly option or going, you should look at it. I'm not done. One third and with that, I was just like, wow, this is very interesting. I think of the kids. We want to walk and do what, what we preach, that we, we really are committed for our kids and, and what climate means to us too. So, and I, I think that's related to the, the heat pump. I think that as long as we can add it later, I am in the same point. Will be on those 160. If it cannot be added later, I might just kind of go in the higher, knowing the reality of what things will, will look in the future. Besides that, I feel comfortable with everything that presented and everything has been entered through the months that we have been working with this.
Yes, I just want to say that I really appreciate just the sheer volume of information that you guys have run us and, and, and made it understandable for like the layperson to really sort of rock the idea of like what's happening with the construction and the different options and stuff. And I mean, I'm sure you must do this a lot, but I think that you, one would never say dumbed it down, but to the exact right level for me personally. Like, I, I really understand what we're doing. And I also just want to shout out like Brandy's stewardship of this because she's been so responsive to any questions that I've had on the numbers and sort of like what's happening where. And it's really up to my comfort level in this whole project considerably. And not that being said, because it's not in any way up in opposite of that. But for me with the, like, you know, as Christina and Maggie Tyler talking about the heat pump, mass timber options. I mean, I would defer to, I guess, our design experts or anyone who feels very strongly or really committed to them on this, having been one third of a book. How much fast timber we want to include in the project, like if it's aesthetics, if it's durability, if it's whatever, like I defer. And I don't feel, you know, I feel like the experts know what they're talking about and, and I'm not an expert. I do feel like the future is now for the heat pump related climate needs. And especially in like the three or four years before our school gets finished, or, you know, I'm gonna say whatever the timeline is for the construction. I feel like, like in some ways we can see we have really anomalous weather now. And I think that it won't hurt us to be super mindful of that and to be ahead of the game and not be in five years like, wow, you know, our junes are as hot as our hoggesses used to be way back in the early twenties. Now we have to put a heat pump in and then to have another like, either find the money through, you know, one of the other levies or, or go back to the second, you know, whatever. Like, why would we dawdle on that when we know it's, I mean, I feel like we know it's coming. And so we have the foresight to see this coming. And again, you know, I'm not going to like plant the flag and team heat pump. But I do feel like if, you know, if we're going to do this project, I think that we could do it to a standard that will serve our students best for the foreseeable future. And I think that for us, the way the seasons have been changing in just the eight years since I've lived in the Pacific Northwest, I think that the foreseeable future is somewhat here.
Yeah, I guess my views are, I don't think that the difference between 165 and 150 is going to be the straw that breaks the camel's back. I think in many ways, like there's probably people who support a 165 proposal that won't vote for a 150 proposal if it's missing certain things. And I think the people that are going to vote against the 150 proposal are also going to vote against the 165. But that's a separate conversation about projects and priorities. So I think embarking upon this path, I think that it makes sense to probably go with those. Like I, I wouldn't try to nickel and dime it. And I think there's some important values, I mean, both in terms of environmental aesthetics as well, particularly with mass timber for me. I guess on that end, a quote that I like, but is from Richard Powers in The Overstore that says, "A tree is a passage between earth and sky." And I would very much like to lean into that as much as possible and would try to keep the bigger picture in terms of what this proposal should embody. And whether or not voters accept that or not, I think it will be a larger question, not these line matters. Well, or it could be, but I think it actually is the opposite way.
No, I think, I was just gonna say, I really, really appreciate that perspective because I think, I think we've done, I think our process throughout this in the last, what, five years even has been really thoughtful and, and really we've learned so many lessons from the past in terms of, you know, going too big or not planning well or whatever. And, and, and we've, I, I feel great about where we are. I'm seeing head nods. I will ask kind of the teams to, to say like, is this hope, are you hoping you kind of hear where we're falling? And I'm going to want to know if it's where you're hoping that we fall. Cause we're a we, even though there's, you know, decision makers here. So I, just to be perfectly honest, I'm terrified of being able to pass a bond, period. You know, I, I don't, I haven't looked at the numbers as much as some of you guys have, but you know, most did not pass. The 60% margin is, is very high. But I, but I appreciate Dan's point in terms of if people are going to vote against it, they're going to vote against it because they're against it, not because of the planning that we've done and the, and the proposal. So, you know, that, that's not something that we can try and convince them of. That's not something that this great plan is going to be able to convince them to vote for it.
Can I add to that? I think going back to the board who hired me and some of you, three of you were there. That's really when you set into motion the whole process. And, you know, the, the other thank you goes to the two of you who were part of the long range facility planning committee. But I think the clear direction has always been whenever we arrive at the time when it's ready to make a decision, that we don't have anything that's left to the imagination for our community, that we're not asking them to approve something that we haven't really thought through. And testament to the, the people that you've been acknowledging, that's where we are. And, and so, you know, Director, I think your, your points are well taken. You know, if it passes, you know, this, we're following more of the recipe of the 1314 era than we are the 2012 era. If it passes, I think we can look and say, the community is again telling us that they are wanting to know where their dollars are going, what that might look like, and how we've gone through a process that is pragmatic. If they both know and we don't pass it, we have a lot of places where we can go to say, well, what exactly was that? Because was it just because you're not, do you just not want facilities at all? Or is it that it's not the right package or it should just be the middle score, whatnot? But the design is there. You've helped put that all together and that's what I feel very solid about in terms of where we've been, how we've gotten to this place, and then the next place. You know, we do know that we have neighbors in Sumner, Bonnie Lake, who are the ones who did pass their bond, a quite large bond. Over 700 million, 730 million, it's the second biggest ass ever in school history. And it's 54% of it this afternoon. So, you know, we, we've been looking at their websites and obviously talking to them. We know that Pasco also passed a pretty big one about a year ago, February. And they had, they had some success. So, you know, wherever we go, we're going to make sure that we put forth the very best information out.
Oh, I just wanted to add one, just in terms of, I, I agree with all of you in terms of the heat pump. As long as it's ready to go, but I also, you know, don't want to exclude other, we're up for a cap tech in 2026, right? Didn't we just do in 2020?
So 2025 will be up for the EPNO and 2027 will get the vote for the cap tech or starting in 2020.
And since we don't have a limit on that, that's something, that's a place where we could always add in a heat pump cost and, and anyway. So there's other, it's, it's not a high enough ticket item that there's other ways of doing it too. So I'm less concerned about it, but I agree that it's kind of, why not now? But so anyways.
And just quickly, Ryan did build in for you into those graphs, what an escalated EPNO levy would be as well as the cap tech. So we did take some assumptions. So when we were building all of that in, that was part of your calculus.
I, I wanted to ask, so, so Joe, you made a really good point about the fact that like, this isn't going to be happening, you know, for students and, and teachers like for like three to four years before like this building would be, you know, I don't even know when this building would be finally in operation, right? And so it will be hotter by then, right? Which I hadn't really thought about. I was kind of thinking in terms of like this year, 2024, 2025, right? So it will be hotter by then. My concern is actually with the cost of operating a heat pump if we're just using regular normal power. And so I'm curious whether there might be support for putting in the optional item that was related to expanding, like setting up for future expanded solar capacity. Because to me, that, that, that would be worth investing in. It wasn't a huge ticket item, I don't think, like that would be investing in, worth investing in now. Because then in the future, like either we could use that power, you know, for regular school purposes, or we could, you know, potentially, you know, ask the voters to fund the addition of a heat pump. If it's getting like intolerably hot, we're going to close school buildings because of the heat kind of thing, then we would potentially be able to use it. Just again, thinking of like what we're modeling for our kids and, and for our district and kind of thinking about our environmental responsibilities as a, as a district, as a board, right? Like that to me seems like a better kind of sequence of things. Is there any interest in that? How much was that?
I think the building is already ready for.
No, it wasn't. So the building is solar ready. The new building will be solar ready and adding the panels would be another 700.
I see, but we're not allowed to make that power yet or we are?
We are now.
Oh, well, so that seems like a really work doing, adding the solar panels, no? That reduces our operating costs, I imagine.
It's not as large as, as you might imagine.
And so with the solar panels, I think that first, I don't know if we can add them later to the, the, the other levy. And they're going down in cost. So at the same time, maybe it is.
There's tariffs.
There's also a lot of grant opportunities that potentially if adding solar to the middle stores and priority, we could, we could look in the future at cap tech funding and commerce matching funds or something.
But I did want to add a comment to your comment that when you said, if the community wants facilities, I do believe the community wants the facilities, period. It's a matter more of how much in my house, especially my daughters. And we are not taking this decision lightly because I do see how much I have to pay of taxes. And it impacts me just like everybody else. So, so it's a decision of, we are hoping that this, that what we're telling the students and the kids in our community is that it is worth the sacrifice that we might not go to a vacation because we have to pay those taxes. But these facilities matter and they matter. And just saying that we, this, this decision to place a bond is not lightly and we are counting it in the sense. So, so, and doing the math, yes, it doesn't make a difference going to 565. So yes, I, but just saying that, that it does matter and we are, we are definitely counting and, 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 and yeah, and we are in the same situation.
Well, and I, you know, I commute from a community that just should build a bond. And there'll be a lot of going back to that. And so what you're saying is absolutely true, Director Martinez, is people are, are looking and they want to make sure that the investment is really going to have that return on that. So that's what I'm saying.
Anyone from the middle school committee want to tell us what they think?
You don't have.
About making home or just in general?
No, in general, like is this where, is this where, is this where you were hoping we would land? And if not, where, what, what are we missing?
And this is where we were hoping it would. But yeah, we definitely hear it, but bonds are not popular for various perception reasons. You know, even if people understand that there are different pots of money, there's still that overall perception of where are you spending the money, how are you managing the money? What do you mean you're all broke, right? K-12 and all of Washington is broke, but there's different fire.
Well, we have a lot of great ideas. We, we haven't discussed this, but all the, the board all received emails. I think all of us received emails from some middle school students, as well as some of you I know did as well, with, with a bunch of questions. And, you know, what could be better than a bunch of middle school students and high school students door knocking, advocating for a school bomb? So I, I, you know, we've learned a lot over the years about, you know, what it's going to take to pass a bond. And I think that we have, we'll, we'll get a great CMEPS committee and we have a great CMEPS committee that at least the start of one and, and go from there and really use everything that we've learned and really our best voices. And speaking of which, you guys have been quiet.
Okay, um, yeah, I think that the hybrid timber auction seems like a really good one that both utilizes like the benefits of like mass timber and then also like keeping the aesthetics cohesive. And then in terms of heating, I think adding the heat pump might be a good idea. I feel like 80 degrees is still a really high temperature. And yeah, especially like a lot of people on the island are ready, like building in more ACs into their houses. And my family doesn't have an AC and we're considering it. So I think preparing for that future is always good. And then, yeah, because our world is changing really fast.
Yeah, I mean, the heat pump thing as well, because I think like having really hot classrooms is really hard to like learn and test in when your classrooms aren't even 80 degrees, like that's pretty hot, especially now it's beginning earlier and earlier. Like there's some hot days and like rain and stuff that can be, it's difficult to learn in classrooms 80 degrees. So I'm going to try to get those in cubic pieces because even throughout the school, like it might be 80 degrees or 80, but there's some classrooms that are hotter and colder and thinking leaving them out with a heat pump would be a really good idea.
What you guys were meaning is after I was thinking too, that aspiring to have classrooms get no higher than 80 is a real tough thing. A lot of us will hop on an airplane to go find weather that's 80 degrees to vacation, not to learn. You know, when I see these teachers coming out of classrooms sweating and their kids sweating after 55 minutes, it's sometimes tough to, tough to the kids and the adults to think so. I agree with you guys.
So I, I've kind of heard a start of maybe not the heat pump, but the mass timber seems to be pretty clear all the way around. But maybe changing mind on, on a heat pump on that is.
I will say I'm feeling more strongly towards heat pump.
Yeah, I, I actually now change my, I am now.
I don't, I don't think $2 million on either way is going to make or break anything and the benefits clearly. I mean, I wouldn't live in a house without it.
Yeah, it was pretty.
I wouldn't, so why would I have my kid learning is my point.
We do say it's the best money we could ever spend in a house.
It really is. I start using it in late March, so. But so we're at this 162-ish number, but more importantly, it's, is the choices. The high school projects are included in these prices, so, or in these numbers. So do you want to give us a reminder of?
Deborah, can we just add one step? So we didn't talk about the other options, like the tree wells and other things. Can we just look at those really quick?
Sure.
I, I didn't get what the tree walls were about before at all, but I think they seem like a great choice now. That seems like, like justifiable for the amount of money. I don't remember what else was like that.
Do you? Oh, yeah, that, that one, yeah. I mean, I feel like the, the black box situation, I know that another performance space in the school and a space like that is much needed. It's disruptive to other classes. And I feel like it's to, to, you know, like, I don't know, performance space in the middle school is slightly, no disrespect to principals, limited at the moment. Like, you know, either they're on stage in the lunchroom, gosh, it's commons. Either they're on stage in the commons or they're in the gym, God forbid, or, you know, whatever, like it's, I think it would be great to have the performance option. And I appreciate the way that it's a flexible space that can be used by the community, by the high school, even by like elementary schools or maybe, or whatever. I don't know, I feel like, I feel like it's something that we could use as a school community in many different ways right now. Especially if at some later point, we decide to really change the performing arts spaces in the high school. And maybe, you know, high school performances could be shutted down to the middle school. Well, that's happening or something so that we wouldn't lose any performance based options in the interim year of, of construction.
I also think that the, we've heard so much tonight and other things about, about like, like social emotional stuff. And I think for a lot of kids at both the middle school and the high school level, you know, the performing arts are really a source of kind of personal development and friendship and, you know, emotional support, like it's so, like kind of role definition and so forth. So like the more that we can do to support the arts at the middle school level, like queuing those kids up to go on to do even more amazing things at the high school level, I think is great. I fully support that if not, like the full version of that.
I mean, I, I think, I think it puts our, I think it emphasizes our values in terms of, we know the importance on the island of, of performing arts. But also I think the way that the plan is, is that it's, I mean, it's kind of the best of every world. It's, you know, I mean, it'll, because of the way that it's going to be designed, professional development space, community meeting space, potentially board room, meeting space, because right now this is not very conducive to having a lot of input. Because we don't have city council chambers anymore, but, but that could be a city, that could be a board meeting place. It could be so many different things that we're really limited right now to the Northwood Commons, the the pack at the high school that's going to kind of change too. So those types of spaces are really limited. And I think, I mean, I think the benefits for that is, I mean, are, I, to me, it's a no brainer as well. I mean, when I was going, when I was looking at the numbers, I was just automatically including that too. Because it's, it seems unfinished and not, I don't want to go into a project like this and have unmet needs. And that would be an unmet need and it's a major need, so.
Yeah, and I think it also provides like a good midsize size space. Like I remember in my last year at the middle school, that was when they had like a scream musical and like, it was, I think they had it outside because there wasn't a space that was like not, like it was either the huge gym, right? Or like some small other rooms, like having that midsize size space is also really useful.
I saw that really shit thing bring us like multi-purpose. And again, times the pack at the high school can be a little underutilized because it's really a lot of like performing arts and it's quite large as well. So like the sort of smaller, more intimate things, like your term of community meetings, stuff like that can definitely be used there. So it could be really well utilized in the high school, but the middle school's there.
Okay, any other?
I will just, no, no different. Just, there was a student in high school when we went to the
Board forum?
Yes, yeah, that he, he did mention something that, that I think is very great here, that the art spaces do touch a lot more students and contribute to the mental health of the students in a way that other programs not necessarily do. And I do think that, that arts do touch a lot more students than not only those that are performing, but those who also are observing the performance or there's a, it'd be added benefit to it. So I think that that stuck to me when that was. So all in favor, so, yeah.
Okay, anything else about the high school? I'm sorry, middle school, high school. Taking us back to, who wants to take us back and go through the specific? Is there, is there a desire to go through the proposal for the high school to look at all of the the high school proposal that we got and correct me from Ron Brandy, but I felt like it was kind of already sort of pared down, you know, just getting it done and kind of, and there wasn't a lot of bells and whistles there of things that we were like, oh, sure, it's nice that we added this, but it could be lifted out. I mean, it seems like most of the things that were in there were either helping safety related or sort of like minimal. So the must do projects, I'm looking back from the slides from our last meeting, must do projects, 17.5 million or is the HVAC and the fire alarm systems and the program improvements, 31.5 million. I know Brandy said she'd reworked some of these numbers. I know Brandy said she'd reworked some of these numbers because of the crest, um, is much more, is more of a need to, a must do. Um, but the stadium restrooms, the main gym and the pack, um, upgrades to make it more conducive to performance space and things like that. The commons in terms of making it more comfortable noise, things like that, right? And then, um, learning community and courtyard, courtyard, two hundred and three hundred halls, new ramp from three hundred to four hundred hall and the radio space. That then would reshuffle. So those are the, that's the scope of that work.
I feel like a, a really strong case was made for all of those things the last time that we talked about it. I don't have any.
Does that include robotics? Yes, because as the radio shifts, then it opens up that. And is that a, is there a black box there too? Or no black, it's the robotics, no black box. Okay. But the performing arts and visual arts communities were supportive of the proposal as a whole.
Yeah, I would say that, yeah, as a whole, who were represented by all of those, they were supportive of that.
With the choices and the way, okay. And the acoustics were sort of sometimes like the must do there and that's addressed in the.
Yeah, and I just want to say as someone that was like on the GET committee, um, I feel like all the programs, all the different departments made their own like, uh, like sacrifices and to make, to touch the most areas of school in the most efficient way. So I really think that like the proposal that the GET and like the, the remodeling plan that they came up with was, is really comprehensive and it addresses the needs that our students have.
Any other thought? So I want to, um, we're looking.
Two other elements were just reimbursing the cap tech fund for the front funding and all the work that we've done over the last two. And then funding an elementary right study this.
So it sounds like consensus moving forward, asking Brandy and, well, Dr. Rundell to prepare a bond proposal, resolution that would, one sixty-two-ish, um, with the, the middle school as proposed with the hybrid mass timber, or at least as much as we would have room for, and including the heat pump and the other optional items. Um, and then the high school project as proposed, crest, um, basically everything that's on here, um, including the reimbursements. So we're looking at a number of around one sixty-two.
Yeah, I, I think when we add the escalation, it'll come up one sixty-three-ish, but we'll, I'll figure that out for you.
Is the mass timber like, I mean, if we sort of slide it scale, like I'm just thinking about how like, you know, Dan was saying, and we're all saying like this sort of like the, the mighty word, my affiliate, like aspect of the mass timber, like, I see that maybe we don't want to have, we want to have some steel or, you know, for like the touchy spots where the kids are getting their dirty fingers, but like, it must be some sort of sliding. I would hesitate to take out our entire, like I would, I'd like, I'd like to see a little bit of wiggle room maybe to like, slide up the hybrid scale, maybe in a way that, that supports, you know, everyone's enthusiastic about the idea of wood. And maybe it's just more like, what do the experts in the end think would be a good balance of like steel to mass timber, but leaving us enough wiggle room that if they're like, how about two thirds mass timber, one third steel? We're not like, oh, shoot, but we're a million dollars short because we didn't plan on it. But I'm still want to support. Dan has been a champion of mass timber, you know, this entire time. And I think it's, you know, in his own way, like quite vision, I got it and I want to support that vision to the extent that it's feasible for us.
And I think, you know, I don't know if Brendan, Joanna, Joanna have anything they want to add to that? You know, within the numbers that we're talking, you're the designers, are we in the right ballpark based on that conversation?
I would say we are in the right range. Uh, I mean, certainly, uh, and to the points that are being spoken, I, I, we will try to, uh, showcase and include as much as we possibly can within the budget. But I think it's a healthy allowance for us, meaningful difference and, um, would make this integral part of the design strategy.
The one million?
Well, maybe, I mean, well, I, you know, and I don't, I don't disagree with you at all. And I mean, in terms of if we go, if we propose a bond between one sixty-three versus one sixty-five, I, I can't imagine there's going to be a difference in who votes for it or against it. And I think it's done in a responsible way. So I don't have any issue with bumping that to the one sixty-five. Increase in the allowance for sustainable options and whether that's more mass timber or we see in the next couple of years if solar is, comes down in cost, but to build in that allowance with the priority being towards sustainable, um, building. I, I don't have, I.
Is it possible to do it that way?
Yeah, and just a reminder to the public, any unused funds for the project, just go right back into paying it back down. So it's not as if, you know, I mean, it's.
Right, we're not sticking it. That's a great idea. I think that's a great idea.
What do you think, Dan, that you were, you know, it was like?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think that, as I said, I don't think there's people that are going to vote for it at one fifty that are going to reject it at one sixty-five. Although I do think of people that would reject it at one fifty that would accept it at one sixty-five. Um, so yeah, between the two, I would go towards the higher and leave it to the experts. But I also think something to be said for juxtaposition in building materials, um, to sort of showcase, um, sort of, one of my favorite buildings is the British Library and like, and the atrium. Um, so you can definitely, you know, have a juxtaposition rather than a continuity, but ultimately I'll leave that to the design team.
I'm, I'm also more comfortable with that because I'm worried about potentially like tariffs affecting. No, I am. Affecting things like.
I've cut that out of the discussion.
But like, uh, uh, you know, the, the cost of solar panels and things like that, like I'm worried about potentially things that in the past have been supported, like, you know, funded, you know, in the interest of like more sustainable building, maybe not paying in the future, like in the next few years. So, so that also is, I'm more comfortable having a little wiggle room for sustainability there too. So I think it's a great idea. And also I wanted to thank Dan for championing mass timber because I had never heard of it before. And he's just like doggedly bitching every time. And, and to the, to a point that we all started looking into it, which is fantastic.
He moved the overshirt window on mass timber completely because like I, the first time you mentioned, I'm like, I could not, literally could not care less. And now I'm like, but now I'm like, this is so great. It's a great way to be at your school. You know, he really like sort of pushed, I think the entire board did get on it, which, um, is a testament to your documents, as we say.
So I think we have the direction that we need.
Me too. And would you do vote on that?
No, we voted on the resolution.
So we'll come back, next steps with, uh, the December twelfth meeting, on the first reading of the resolution. And then that gives the community a month, uh, before you vote finally, uh, which would be your first meeting in January, um, for additional input. So they'll have basically a month between now and the twelfth of December, as they learn about it, and then another month between your first reading and your second.
Can we advertise this resolution like through social media and make sure that the community is aware of what the board would be voting on for the next meeting? Agreed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attendance. We were here to make you a pair.
No. Thank you.
Can we not change it?
Thank you all so much.
We're not appropriating much.
That's right.
We're just asking for money. We're not appropriating.
Right.
Community appropriates.
We're just doing our best.
Yeah. All right, moving on. Four B board policy, student governing boards, student representatives, sports. I know. All right, all right, student rep report.
Okay, that's a lot to follow up on, like. Okay, um, okay, yeah. So first we had our second SSA. We had our first, second SSA meeting here and, um, we got to know our SSA members more. And also, um, we've been drafting a survey to send out to our new students, both coming in from open enrollment and just people who've moved, um, on the island and have just joined their district. And, um, we had our SSA give us feedback on the different questions and helping frame the questions for different age groups. Um, and yeah, we're hoping to send out a survey sometime, um, in the month, upcoming month so that we can analyze the data and how, and then we can use that data to like shape what the SSA does later in the year. And then now for things that have been happening in the elementary school. Yeah, so a lot of things that, fun things that happen in elementary schools, um, fifth grade band orchestra and choir programs have gone kickstarted and fifth graders have really been enjoying those enrichment programs. And then, um, all of our elementary schools had their Veterans Day assemblies. Um, at Island Park, boys and boy and girl scouts loved the school in a pledge of allegiance and in a color guard ceremony. And at Lakewood, students told stories about their veteran family members who came to the assembly. And then in some.
In some elementary classes, students learned about the election process in the United States. And then in class exercise, they started on five different school related issues supported by a native candidate using the electoral college. Uh, at the beginning of some of these lessons, students thought the electoral college was actually a real college. And how to get involved in our political system from such a young age. Really impressive maturity point for elementary schoolers who claim to have been distracted by the election this week. Next, there were a lot of celebrations for October and cultural holidays such as Diwali and Dia de los Muertos. Students celebrated by tasting Indian candy, coloring with flingoli, a traditional art form consisting of mosaic shapes, creating dias with Play-Doh and gem stickers, sampling cloth and having discussions about the history of Diwali with parents and peers. Island Park also set up a display in the Hall of the Dia de los Muertos. Students have appreciated looking at a different way of celebrating life and, and death without being sad that people have passed. Students were excited to learn about different cultures, of different cultures different from their own.
Yes, and then next, um, the Westmaster PTA hosted a fall themed lunch for Staff Appreciation Week. And, um, we appreciate our teachers so much and are happy to see them cared for in the way that they deserve. And then, um, for Halloween, we had, uh, elementary schools, schoolers have their annual Halloween parties. And here you can see students engaging in a donut on a string game. And I miss those days. Yeah, and our amazing teachers also dressed up. Uh, here's a, a highlight with staff members in Northwood dressed up as Inside Out characters. I think it's a really funny costume. And then, um, Lakewood and Island Park also had Halloween parades where students walk down the hallways or in the gym for parents and other students to see their costumes. And our elementary SSA members described this month's school spirit to be quote, quote, hyped but mindful. So that's funny. And then next, Northwood had their monthly grown up recess where, uh, parents would come in during recess and recess and play with the kids. And then we also had, um, fifth grade patrols and peer mediators have begun their jobs on the playground and on crosswalks before and after school. And peer mediators basically help resolve conflict on the playground and include other children. And the patrols work to keep, um, students safe in the community when they go to and from school.
At the middle school, so science, the middle school are also doing really great. Um, all island band night was definitely a hit at the middle school and the fire orchestra had their fall concerts. Um, IMS has also recently instituted a new sixth grade only choir as so many sixth graders are joining choirs. Um, also many students are joining honor choirs, including one of our SSA members Paige. The aerospace program is also going really well. After their unit of airplanes, this program had two former aerospace pilots come to speak, on what it's like to be a fighter pilot. They also recently set off hot air balloons, which was a blast. Um, Spanish classes are also having guests, um, and Chef Zarzoga then visited in certain cycles of traditional foods as well as cooked a hot lunch for that day. So it was very good. Um, cross country also had a really great end to its season at IMS. It dominated league finals with four team championships and three individual championships. Um, wrestling has also recently started up and is looking forward to a great season with its first meeting right now. His Catholic sixth grade social studies class also recently built the replicas of early agricultural communities. They were learning about in their classes out of Legos. Um, the health classes also recently did their CPR certification. And IMS ran a webinar for parents about the parent side of psychology to help parents see how their child's work is going.
Yes, and then at the high school, um, the end of fall sports has been amazing. As we know, both boys and girls cross country one state, which is like the first time they've done that maybe ever. I don't know. It's crazy. Um, and then Owen and Sophia, Owen Howell, Sophia Rodriguez, and Victoria Rodriguez had their team five segment done. And also JV and JBC soccer, as we saw, ended their seasons first in their leagues and did really great. And then additionally, tennis won individual King Co titles in men's doubles and men's singles. And Alex Harwood won the individual King Co title for golf. So a lot of great things coming, um, that happened in fall sports. And then coming up for winter sports, um, both, both girls and boys basketball are starting, boy swimming, gymnastics, wrestling and ultimate frisbee. So a lot to see. And then, um, athletics director Lindsay Blaine also won the T-Mobile five thousand dollar grant, which will be used to refurbish parts of the stadium and the athletics. And then in addition, Ms. Kenyon has been helping seniors a lot with college application support. She recent, recently hosted an assembly for seniors, um, helping them learn more about college applications and where they should be for financial application, financial aid applications. And she hosts a lot of lunchtime support sessions and has a lot of different self-paced programs which have been really helpful for seniors. And in addition, she's hosting a tech job college and internship fair on Wednesday, October eleventh, um, for kids, students to learn more about trade career paths and salaries as well as summer jobs. And then the Mercy Center is hosting their annual blood drive, um, on the first from eight to two P M. Uh, and then students have helped set up this event and many will be volunteering. And we encourage you guys to donate to make a difference.
Um, I don't have a record, but the, uh, radio program has def, has also won a ton of awards as we saw earlier. Um, so, so many cool things, best high school radio is super awesome. Um, additionally, we passed out the edition of the Islander because there was a lot of really, really good articles in it this year, this week or month. Um, so there were articles on snail hound, Islander Girls, there were critiques beyond there. And even an article about cultural M I H S and they're all really, really well researched. We highly recommend you all read them. They're very interesting. They definitely sparked a lot of conversations between students. Um, teachers at the high school have definitely been taking full advantage of the presidential elections as well. Um, some of U S history and comparative government teachers, we ran a mock election with a ballot that maybe the Washington State ballot was super interesting. Um, Crest also hosted a vice presidential debate party. Though many of SSA members also commented on political merchandise after the election as some of them felt sort of divisive, that felt that was sort of divisive and were unclear on whether or not it was allowed in schools. Additionally, two M I H seniors, Sophia Loizel and Kyle Grustel have become Coca-Cola scholar semifinalists. So out of one thousand three hundred and thirty-six students, only one point two seven percent of all applicants, um, received this. And one hundred and fifty of this one point two seven percent will, will receive a twenty thousand dollar college scholarship. Additionally, the cybersecurity club has completed their first round of the cyber entry competition. The first out of four or five rounds that will take up the beginning of this club sphere.
Yes, and then next, um, ECAR, the Education Coalition on Asian American Representation. Uh, they visit Island Park in Northwood, Northwood's fourth and fifth grade classes to give presentations on Asian, Asian culture and racial aggressions. And, um, this is the third year, um, consecutive, consecutive year of these presentations. And I know elementary students really look forward to seeing their high schoolers, um, fellow high schooler, wait, the high schoolers that they look up to come down to that, um, their schools. And then Petri is also having their November fundraiser. Um, Host is also thriving. They went to their fall leadership conference, which is an opportunity to learn more about. which is an opportunity to learn more about the healthcare field and get information about different job and volunteering opportunities.
Um, the drama program.
Oh yeah, and the high school also had their Veterans Day assembly, which included a speech from one of the teachers at the high school, Mr. Hughes. And people were very respectful and um, and it was particularly important since it was the day after elections. And um, the lack of phones definitely increased engagement during the presentations and a lot of them were very.
Um, the drama programs play Little Shop of Horrors also opened tonight at seven and is running through the 23rd. Um, Nick Woods was actually in the show tonight and Dr. Rundle is going to be in the show later, I heard.
Everyone goes to the show just to see.
I think he's gonna get eaten by a plant, so that's exciting. Additionally, in collaboration with U K D or Northwest, the drama program also did their playwright project where four different students wrote 10 minute plays and then performed them with help from the drama two program, which was super cool. MIHS Bird Culture also recently hosted a flower design workshop where community members arranged flowers and pumpkin vases. Montreal also traveled to Philadelphia for their Empire turn up where we placed 17th internationally, which is super awesome. Um, 14th MIHS students were also selected to participate in the Western International Band Clinic Honor Bands, um, which is an opportunity to work with professional conductors and play with students from across the country. So it's an amazing opportunity. Choir also recently had its retreat, uh, CC there and two of its members, Birding Newcomer and Shelby Conaway, have selected to be part of the all national honor choir.
Anyways, and then finally we want to thank Mr. Henry because we uh, use a lot of his photos from the Instagram. Uh, so yeah, thank you. You guys, by the way, do you guys follow the district Instagram?
For sure. My daughter tagged him every day.
So you might be adding some repeat.
Ian's gonna follow me pretty soon.
Do each of the element, do each of the schools have their own?
Um, not everyone has one yet, but they're growing. Uh, where are we now?
I actually just got an email from Julie in cover of Claire's news.
How's that, uh, middle school program coming along?
Well, our, our um, content um, provider is currently out on, uh, she just had an X surgery. But she actually texted me earlier and said, I'm still posting to Instagram, so hopefully, hopefully we will in Spain.
I got a lot of the middle school information for nurses.
West Mercer's agreed that's fair.
Great. Thanks, guys. Um. Okay. Uh, moving on to five, full governance process, process monitoring. Board policy 1005, board officer and board member duties. Monitoring report. Um. Any thoughts? Since this is a review of ourselves, um, how about we go through it by section? See if there's any questions or comments or opinions on each one. So uh, first one is uh, whether or not we had an annual organizational meeting and this was from the past year in December.
This was in January because Jody.
We did have it in January, um, but we had it, which I think is. So um. Yes, so I, I would argue that we um, are in compliance of that. Um, anyone have any other comments on that? Uh, next up is superintendent access board secretary and performs all duties as outlined by law. I would say we've got minutes at each one. Um, normal order of, yes, thank you Michelle, very much. Uh, normal order of business uh, is modified for the organizational meeting. That's kind of a check. Um. The uh, this is new this year, or at least been modified in terms of the organizational meeting and the selection of the legislative representatives. This has been modified to reflect the changes that were made um, that in that it will move to June. June and then be the, the two-year terms.
And can I just, can I just add, I think that, I think that that move has sort of been proven to be extremely useful, even just reflected in our ledge linkage meeting. I mean, Christina and I spent many hours and many meetings sort of preparing for that and going over events and stuff. And we would not have been able to do that if we had come on, you know, immediately before, immediately thereafter and it was really, that sort of use, I mean, sort of like, to me, it's demonstrated the utility of having someone else, of being able to attend to that effort.
And that was very, very flawless around it was legislative linkage session, you know. That was really the best that we, that I personally experienced. I especially appreciated the student participation, you know, like.
The system works well, especially thinking that the, the board could change every two years. So it, it adds that stability to that uh, relationship with the, the legislators, so, so.
I agree. I was gonna say the same thing. I'll just say I agree.
Um, board officers duties. Any comments, questions, concerns? Vice President? Any comments, questions, concerns? Legislative representatives? Uh. Do we need that one? We have, oh yeah, because that's duties and not how they're elected. Um, individual board members? On page four. For development?
Yeah, I think the only one for board development that I would add, and I think we've talked about, I mean, we're obviously, or at least my view, obviously in compliance. Um, would we just be, consider like maybe once a year to have like a team building exercise outside of any sort of learning or any pedagogy, I mean, just sort of whether that's, I mean, just something fun uh, to try to, to bond as individuals.
Yeah, I remember, I was very disciplined my first year on the board because I heard we were having a re- or a retreat and I was like, oh, where do we go? We go to some cabin in the mountains or something. It was like, we sit here and we go over, you know, planning for the next year. And I was like, I'm super disappointed.
I don't disagree with you at all. There was, my first year on the board, we uh, had a softball game, school board versus city council.
Who was?
Wow. Uh, I think we did. Were you there?
I, I was not, but was there an injury from one of the participants or was?
There was an injury, there's a major injury. Yes, there was. Yes. Blown out knee.
I have heard that one of our board members has a vote though, so you know.
I, I know that one of our staff members has one too and uh, yeah, I mean, it seems like we have to, it'd be hard to avoid, we're gonna vote really. Yes. Um, great comments. Uh. Isn't that it?
Um, can I ask a question? And, and I guess that it is because um, it's just a question. So I see the students are not in those documents and I think it's obvious for me, but I would like to kind of.
It's a different policy.
It's a different policy. Um, but I think that it certainly is worth a discussion on whether or not we want to reference that other policy in this to ensure that board directors make sure that happens. I would have to go back and look at that language.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
We get a joint language.
Yeah, we would do a joint language review, which would be the next meeting, so we can take a look at that um, between now and then. Um.
I think it's acknowledging.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Really part of how we're born.
Yes. Just everyone else we've mentioned, yeah.
I would maybe put it like before, number four or after number four, since that talks about um, word development. It's sort of related to my mind because they participate in.
I was thinking it could be under three A, not A, uh, that it could be three E after individual numbers that have the student members.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, fine.
Is that something uh, you want me to take a go at with language and bring to you or do you want to develop that or does someone want to take that on?
I, I am happy to delegate to.
Doesn't have to be. She's an. It's like acknowledging their role on the board.
Yeah.
Directing.
Yes. All right. All right, so I'm looking for a um motion to find the board in compliance with board policy 1005.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Uh, students?
Hi.
And board?
I.
Uh, any opposed abstaining? 2050. Um. Running out of steam, guys. Uh, consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Uh, any discussion? Um, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as published indicate by saying aye, students?
Aye.
And board?
Aye.
Any opposed? 2050. Superintendent report and announcements.
Uh, I think we covered all of them for um, for today.
Uh, legislative report, um, I refer you back to Tuesday. Thank you. I, I agree again. Thank you. It was a lot of time and effort and I think there, and the document and everything looked great.
Thank you. And I just wanted to get, get again, the input of our fantastic students. I think that was the highlight of the meeting. Always. And I think that our legislators really appreciate hearing from our student voices.
You've been great facilitators. I feel like if, if this conversation seemed like it moved relatively efficiently. Yeah.
It really did. Thank you. Um, announcements, inquiries and reports? Any?
Uh, I attended the Wes Mercer PAC yesterday. Um, it was pretty much, but it was presented today. So, so um, I will say that the only uh, thing that caught my eye uh, was that parents were very grateful that this year they had more information about how I already works through the communication portion. And the last year and the previous year, there was not. So there was a lot of uncertainty and this year was clear for them. So they appreciated that. If there's, they have a lot more to understand.
You're talking about the PDFs that are the, the documents that the teachers send.
The teachers and, and the school is sending them to understand how I already work and, and, and kind of explains. So I think that they didn't know the system. So they were acknowledging that this year the information was, was better and, and they were getting it. And, and the last year was not so that the, about maybe the uncertainties was because it was it was about wondering what it is. So, um, so pretty much that other ones, I think that Megan probably would think that it was that. And I will say that um, although it was the previous maybe meeting, I did watch the middle school school logic webinar on YouTube the other day. And I recommend that everybody should watch it because there's a lot of things that I didn't know of in school logic and it is also the same thing. Like I have been in the district so long and until now I learned so many things that I should have known by now. And um, and so I appreciate that information from the middle school and that is available in YouTube for everybody to watch and you can please ask people to.
Um, I went to the uh, well, it's from the word pack, but um, you've got that as well here. Much of the PTA advocacy meeting, um, a lot of their focus is still on bike safety and children spinning around the island at high rates of speed on their electric bikes. Um, as well as uh, heads up potential of the youth and family services funding and hearing rumblings from the city that they're gonna not pay after two years for the counselors because it, there's a budget issues and then um, I think there may have been a little bit misinterpreting on their parts of, of what that meant, but anyway, they're keeping their eye on it. They're keeping their eye on counselor and mental health funding. Have we heard that? Yeah, I haven't heard it either. And I, I mean, I'm not on the board of the community services anymore, but I rolled off, but um, as of, you know, last fall when I rolled off, I had not heard anything about that. So I talked to him a little bit about it, but you know. They're always concerned about, everyone's always concerned about mental health. And um, I have, whatever. And then uh, I just want to say that I went today with the Jazz Combo. There's about eight or nine students from Jazz Ensemble who went and played at K and K X um, for a concert and with a guest artist, Jay Thomas, who's I guess a well-known Seattle jazz artist. And um, it was just absolutely delightful. They played three or four songs, they played in the studio, they had a little interview. Um, it was super nice and uh, it will be online as part of their like high school jazz series in the next couple of weeks. And um, I will send it to Ian when it comes online so he can push it out, but uh, it was really delightful to see these kids. And I know they worked very hard because I was the in-school chaperone for them all weekend when they were rehearsing. Since I had both completed my paperwork and it was a soft touch when the jazz, uh, when the music teacher asked me, so.
Um, no committee meetings other than agenda planning, um, one PSA announcement. My new favorite band is Chinese American Bear that I discovered from KXB. Highly recommend it. Uh, first generation Chinese American, um, is one of the duo, married, husband is the other half. Went to Princeton and decided to go into music. And in particular, uh, one of their songs is Feeling Fuzzy, which is about a teenage desire, a teenager's desire to have fun with their friends while under the watchful eye of her mother. So I think also um, probably something a lot of students can relate to on the island. One more time on the name, Chinese American Bear. Check it out for that.
Um, I attended the middle school pack meeting on Tuesday and talked about it a bit at the linkage session. So it's continued discussion of MTSS and tier one um, and how all that is going and they continue to um, seem to be having unique struggles with the, unique to middle school struggles with the phone policy and yonder pouches and things like that, but it's all in, taking it all in stride. Um, and then uh, PTA council meeting yesterday and that um, had that as well.
Yeah.
Nothing. No. Um, and then uh, yeah, that's it. Looking forward to you. I know the football team has a playoff, state playoff tomorrow.
Tomorrow, 5 P M.
Memorial Stadium, it's a big deal. Uh, and the play that you guys mentioned, so lots of things happening.
Yes.
Um, again, thank you for our lovely dinner.
She's, she's out. She's out right now.
Oh, okay. At the play. Anyways, it is, it's a wonderful addition to our meeting.
Um, and that's it. Uh, oh, one more thing? Oh, yeah. Okay. Um, so recently, if you guys recall, we uh, Lucy and I attended like the start conference over the summer for NSBMA, so National Student Board Member Association. And then I went ahead and like wanted to get more involved. So I ran for like some, I forgot what the name of the position is, but I think like technical, regional advisor, some, some random superficial name, but in, in this position, like I uh, like I'm meant to help connect student board reps across like different states in the western region. So I think like they have this weird way that they break it up. So we're actually covering like the 24 states in the west because there's a lot less board members in like the middle area. So yes, like that's been my new thing and it's been ramping up um, as we get here and um, yeah, and it's interesting to like connect with other student reps. Like I know this one girl from California now, like their district is 250,000 kids large and like they, I'm so blessed to have this like amazing school district, this amazing board because like they do not have like nearly the same amount of support for student voice at their districts. And yeah, anyways, in the position, like I really hope to um, help increase the amount of student reps that are there and also support the existing student reps. Uh, yeah, so if I ever need support, I'll definitely reach out to you.
Congratulations.
Very proud of you.
Don't minimize it. It is a great, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the revelation.
We just want to put on everyone's radar um, that uh, we're working on the agenda for our January study session. And so if there's areas of learning that you're interested in, Christina and I just, for example, talked today about um, learning more about kind of um, when there is complaints. when there is complaints or concerns or allegations of something that comes to the district, what is the process? And kind of from a high level in terms of just knowing what the process is, how that gets through the system, and how it's investigated and things like that. So that's of interest. I know we've done that before, but it was a long time ago. It was probably just me. I doubt it was even Nagita that participated in that. And then if there's other things, you know, for example, curriculum, how does it, how does a new curriculum idea kind of form? And then what process does it go through? And, you know, so any of those things, it might be, you know, since we've done the pressing bond work now until, I mean, there's still going to be ongoing work. But, you know, if there's questions like that in terms of how does that happen? And how does this fall through? And yeah, we're monitoring the end result, but how did it get here? Like if you've got ideas or things that you want to learn more about, that raise it to him being and it's something that we can look at and educate ourselves on. And then many of us are going to the WAZR conference this next week. And I know I heard those. But what?
Oh, I heard. So. Basically, I a year ago broke my leg pretty badly and recently tweaked it super badly. So I have to get more surgery on it to sort of stabilize the bones. I can't really walk. I never know, which is why I have crutches. And my only choice for surgery was Tuesday. So I have to get surgery Tuesday or a month from now, which is really an option. So I won't be able to tell you.
You will be missed.
You will be missed and we will make sure that you attend in the future in terms of well, there isn't a day on the hill. We have to talk about that too, in terms of how we're going to, but I'll let, I'll let y'all talk about that. And then also if we want to have anyone attend the National School Board Association meeting, that's in, or conference that's in January in DC.
Yeah.
Have you guys been talking February? Oh, it's February. Right. Okay. I just want to ensure it's on radars if there's.
Yeah, we're registering.
Oh, you're right.
Michelle's made all the logistics and.
Oh, wait. I didn't get that approved.
I'd already approved it.
Oh.
There's.
No, I'm just kidding. I was the first one to do it as a ledge rep. So I brought it to the board and asked for, I'm just joking. But there were students that went.
Yeah, listen, you could go. That's why I was actually going first.
I wonder if Lucy could go. The airfare is cheaper than going to San Antonio. For sure.
February in DC. Anyways, can have offline conversations, but yeah. Okay, so we are gonna recess into executive session. There it is. So we have an executive session. The purpose is to conduct an executive session to review the performance of the public employee pursuant to RCW 4231101G. The board will be in executive session until nine o'clock at the latest. I need a motion and a second to recess into executive session.
So moved.
And it is 8:40. All in favor? And to keep us saying aye, students?
Aye.
And board? And so we are in recess, we're in recess of the regular meeting. We're gonna and we will reconvene at nine o'clock. And we will reconvene um, at nine o'clock. We're back in session looking for motion. Uh, the executive section. It was conducted, no action taken, reconvening the regular meeting, looking for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Nine o'clock.